I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Laws of the State of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of this meeting of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2025 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on the bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed two copies of this schedule to the local source in the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Priscerna?
Here.
Mayor Karlovich?
Here.
Councilman Skiris?
Councilman Skiris?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Pantina?
Here.
Mr. Mazzio?
Here.
Mr. Liddowdy?
Here.
Mr. Colella?
Here.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Here.
And Mr. Puglisi?
Is there a motion to approve the May 15 minutes? Motion made by Mr. Grimaldi, seconded by Mr. Clemente. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Communications, Kathy?
Yes, Chairman. We received correspondence from Mr. Lawrence Calley regarding prior approval for 251 Monroe Avenue.
Okay. I'm just going to interrupt here. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Rego on that, but I'm going to ask everyone to project the people out there telling us that they can't hear us, some of the microphones aren't on, and the air conditioning, that you're so frigid out there, is not working as well as it should be. So, Mr. Rego, this one, oh, for Rego? Come on, Rego.
It's coming from over here.
That's okay. I can yell.
Project.
We received a letter from Lawrence Calley here to June 2. It's basically with regard to a prior application resolution we did at 251 Monroe. We memorialized the resolution on June 8, '23. There apparently is an issue with Amazon truck parking on-site. Is that what the... Apparently, there's Amazon trailers on-site and somebody... No, I have it here. Someone said something to somebody about it, and Calley wrote a letter saying that we covered this in our 2023 resolution, and these Amazon trailers can stay where they are or do what they do. I took a look at the resolution that we did, and there was... The storage areas that we were focusing on then was for entity Kodoka USA Limited. However, this resol... And I need to speak to someone about it, maybe Kevin. There's different areas of the site. It's a big site. They mentioned the southern portion for Doka. They mentioned northeast portion, and I have to sort out where these trailers are and whether Doka should be there or whether the Amazon trailers are okay there. And that's the main issue regarding Amazon trailer storage. Kevin, off the top of your head, do you know what area Doka is? I know we approved... I think it was the northeast section?
I'd be happy to look into that, Mr. Rego.
Okay.
But I do wonder if we're putting the cart before the horse in this matter. The... Mr. Calley wrote to us mentioning a complaint from the Borough. The complaint came from the construction official.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with this board. My suggestion is that this board respond and say, "You received a complaint from the construction official. It is not the business of this board. We suggest you pursue with the construction official." And if at some point down the line, this board is called upon to make an interpretation or they wish to make an amendment to their site plan, or they want to come back to us and say anything they want to say, then perhaps at that time, they can do that. But right now, this is between them and the construction.
Or they go to municipal court.
This board, Judge... This board has nothing to do with this particular issue and this particular model.
Thank you.
Your call, Kevin.
Well, that's why when I saw this come across, I asked Kathy to send correspondence to you and Mr. Rego, that before any letter goes out, I'd like to be a part of that because I did not want to take any kind of board action because I didn't think it was our position. I think it just should go right back to the permit department and zoning and let them take care of their business, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, that's the way I'd like to handle it. And, Mr. Rego?
Done.
You can now send that letter over to them to state just that. This is not our issue. You have to straighten it out with them.
Do they handle this already, Kevin? This was sent to the Borough of Kenilworth.
Does who have it?
The construction department.
Yes.
They do? Okay.
Chairman, I have a draft response. I'd be happy to share that with Murphy Dean.
Okay. I would like that. Okay?
Stating what you just said.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we gotta... We have to keep our business our business. When we take the overflow, it becomes crazy. We have to take care of what we do.
Or it becomes your business.
Right. And we don't want it our business. We want to stay in O'lane. Okay. Enough with that?
Okay.
Okay, next correspondence?
We received an email from Mr. Frank Neary requesting the following applications be dismissed without prejudice. Application 24010, 720 Boulevard, and 730 Jefferson Avenue.
Okay. Kevin, I think you should take the helm here.
Chairman, these two properties were the subject of two separate applications to this board dating back to last, perhaps, November. They're redeemed incomplete at the end of December. I've been in contact with the applicant, asking for updates. As of a month ago, we have received none despite repeated requests. I suggested at that time that either submit what's required or the board may take action to deem these applications... To deny them without prejudice because they're on the books, but it would be best if the applicant were two advisors. The applicant has advised us that they no longer wish to pursue these applications. My understanding is that there were court actions concerning this. They are separate and beyond this board, so whatever they are will continue or not as they desire, but we do not have these two applications on our books anymore.
Okay.
The board would be asked to pass two resolutions denying the applications without prejudice so they can take further action as they wish.
Okay. So, what we would need to do as a board, we would have to have a motion to dismiss this application on both of these applications without prejudice. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a... Does the board understand that?
Yeah. It can be done through a motion vote or you need a resolution?
Both.
Best to do a resolution because it was the subject of a devolvent application.
Right. I've done these before.
Do a motion vote?
I get that, but then do we even need to take a vote?
A motion and a resolution.
I'm sorry?
A motion and a resolution would be in order, Sheriff.
Thank you. So, is there a motion to dismiss both of these applications without prejudice?
Some of them.
Moved by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Cl... Somebody out there. Clemente?
Two votes, Sheriff.
Okay. And that's for application, we'll call it 24010, 720 Boulevard. And all in favor? All right, let's take a roll call. Roll call?
Mr. Priscerna?
Yes.
Mayor Karlovich?
Yes.
Mr. Skiris?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Liddowdy?
Yes.
Mr. Colella?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
And Mr. Puglisi?
Is there a motion to dismiss without prejudice, application 24009, 730 Jefferson Avenue? Moved by... Oh, my God. Mr. Puglisi? You need a name tag. And seconded by Mr. David. Roll call, please.
Mr. Priscerna?
Yes.
Mayor Karlovich?
Yes.
Mr. Skiris?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Liddowdy?
Yes.
Mr. Colella?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
And Mr. Puglisi?
Okay, so these resolutions will be presented to us for our September meeting, correct? Okay. All right, next item. Is that all, Kathy?
The next is a presentation.
Okay. Okay, next, we have a presentation. It's our Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Housing Plan. Mr. Mastrata is from Harbor Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Michael Mastrata, Harvard Consultants, Licensed Professional Planner, offices at 320 North Avenue, East Cranford, New Jersey. I am here tonight as the Borough's Affordable Housing Planner to present the Fourth Round Affordable Housing Plan. I have a handout that I would like to circulate, and the handout that I'm circulating is a summary of the same document that is currently posted on the Borough's website. The Borough... The plan is that the public is interested in reviewing the document. It's available to the public. Hard copies have been provided to both the Borough Clerk and the Borough Planning Board, so we have hard copies of the document in the building. We also have electronic copies on our website, so if anybody has any questions about what I'm presenting tonight or thinking about it, have a question, it's available to everybody to review. With your permission, I'd like to hand out one handout.
Absolutely.
Hold the copies so we can see how far it goes.
Yes.
Do you have it?
Thanks, Michael. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, man. You need one?
We'll have one.
Thank you, Mayor. That's very nice of you. Isn't that a big name?
This is in... That's not the question.
Rich's backyard.
Yes, Rich's backyard. It's where they have the Kenilworth annual...
Yeah. It's actually in my... Not my backyard, because you would have seen the pina colada.
The rumor was that you were... It's coming up. You had a handout.
If you have the question about Airbnb, is that you had a question about Airbnb?
This is an extra mic.
I was okay.
Your backyard.
Okay. That's...
Oh, I'll run ready for it.
Yeah.
Thank you. For the record, I've just handed out a PowerPoint that is just a summary of the plan. I'm just going to go over a... Rather long and complicated document. The PowerPoint is designed to summarize it as best I can and put it into as simple a term as I can also. Bless you. Okay?
Thank you.
First page is just our cover sheet, and then the second slide... I have the presentation broken down into four sections. History of Affordable Housing, Fourth Round Affordable Housing Obligation calculation, overview of prior round obligation, and our proposed Fourth Round Compliance. And then available to answer any questions that anybody has. Slide three is the history section. We broke the history section down to one slide. Like a lot of information, you can dent it on one paper. As most people are aware, the Mount Laurel I decision, the first Mount Laurel decision was passed in 1975. We just passed the 50-year mark. So, it is 50 years of court cases, legislation, and so forth that is broken down behind that, below that. 1985, the New Jersey State Legislature passed the Fair Housing Act, which created COA, the Council on Affordable Housing, which adopted a series of regulations and rounds. The prior round was 1987 to 1999. The third round was 1999 through June 30, 2025, which is next Monday, concludes the third round. I'm here tonight to present the Fourth Round Plan, which starts next Tuesday, July 1, 2025, and is a 10-year period. It extends through June 30, 2035. Each round is a 10-year period. However, if you look at the third round, you're wondering why is it greater than 10 years? Because the gap years are folded into the third round. That was the period of time when the COA legislation was going back and forth with a series of rules that were continuously amended and never passed through state legislature. So, it created an expanded period of time until the Mount Laurel decision was issued in 2015, which created the gap year plus the third round, so you have a larger time period. I'm here tonight because on March 20, 2024, Governor Murphy signed amendments to the Fair Housing Act, which established the rules for the fourth round, which I'm quickly going to walk through in the next slides, which is the Fourth Round Affordable Housing calculation. The report that, again, is available to the public and hard copies are on file, goes into great detail of how these numbers are derived and calculated. I'm not going to take up your time tonight and go through all of the variables and all of the nuances of the multipliers, so I just simplified it on this slide just to give everybody a high-level overview. Our fourth round, where, first of all, we are in housing region two. To be very clear, in the affordable housing world, you're not working within the boundaries of a municipality or the boundaries of a county. You're working within the boundaries of a region. We're in region two, so we're in a region together with Essex County, Morris County, Union County, and Warren County. So, when the numbers are calculated and they are assigned, that's... They're assigned to our region two. Our number for Borough of Kenilworth is then calculated, as long with every other municipality, is calculated by three multipliers, three variables, and equalize non-residential valuation factor. What does that mean? In fact, essentially, it means how much... What's the value of your non-residential properties in your borough compared to the property value of other housing regions, other municipalities in your region, and how much have they increased over the years? It's a subset. More complicated than that, but that's essentially how you drive that variable. The next variable is income capacity factor, which measures the degree at which a municipality's median household income differs from the income floor of the lowest median income housing in its region. So, essentially, the wealth of our borough versus the wealth of the municipality that has the lowest level in our region, not in our county, but in our region. Number three is land capacity factor. How much available land do we have remaining in our borough, which the report puts into great detail to show you that, as everybody knows, we're a substantially built-out municipality, very little vacant developable land remaining, so our number of acres in that variable is very low. Again, it's spelled out in the detail in the report. Next slide, average allocation factor. This should break down those numbers one step further. Housing region two, the prospective need as calculated by the Department of Community Affairs, DCA, is 20,506. That's the regional prospective need. That's how many affordable housing units the Department of... The DCA has calculated using those multipliers I just went through that our housing region requires for the fourth round. Then it's divided down, broken down by municipality based on those three variables, and we conclude that... The DCA has concluded that Kenilworth's fourth round present need is 35, and Kenilworth's fourth round prospective need is 208. Present need is the rehabilitation of existing units serving the low and moderate income households. Perspective need is generally known as new construction. Those are the new units that we are responsible for providing. We don't really need to provide 208 for a whole host of reasons. I'll hit the highlights. One, we don't have any land, or very, very, very little vacant land, so we qualify with what's called a vacant land analysis. That lowers our number substantially. But if you don't have a lot of land, how do you address your number? How do you put a plan together? You require a public mechanisms as a municipality that recognizes you don't have a lot of vacant land, yet you still have this constitutional obligation. So, what do you do? We create what's required, what's called overlay zones, and we have three of those in our plan. I'm going to go through one at a time. The next slide is the timeline. 2025, Kenilworth Housing Element Fair Share Plan timeline. This, as I said, Governor Murphy signed amended Fair Housing Act in March of 2024, which amended DCA, released their calculations, those numbers I just went through, for our obligation for the fourth round. The DCA report had a calculation of 208 for Kenilworth for its prospective need, and that was based on 4.65 acres of developable land. That's one of the variables I just spoke of. The Borough Council, then on January 15, 2025, adopted a resolution committing to that number, that number of 208. So, that then sent us to the court to get a court order to memorialize, which was adopted on March 27, 2025, and then we started preparing this plan. We had a couple of Zoom meetings in April, April 16 and April 23, where we talked through the outline of this plan, and the plan was filed in advance of tonight. It was filed on June 13, which is more than 10 days prior to tonight's meeting. The plan was also filed with the Office of Planning Advocacy at the state as required, a hard copy, as well as a hard copy sent to the Union County Planning Board. Notices were circulated to the current law for joining municipalities, and the plan has been posted on our website. So, and we also have it available for the public, for the Planning Board and our clerk. So, we've covered all of our notice requirements, hard copy, electronic copy. Under this law, under this amended Fair Housing Act law, every municipality in New Jersey is required to adopt their Fourth Round Housing Element Fair Share Plan prior to June 30 of this year. Again, June 30 concludes the third round. The law requires new plans to be in place prior to July 1. So, by adopting this plan tonight, the town will be in compliance with the new amended Fair Housing Act. The next step after tonight is council would have to endorse a resolution. The council would adopt a resolution endorsing the planning board's resolution in support of this plan. Those two resolutions, along with the hard copy of the plan, are then submitted down to DCA, hard copy into a portal, and it will be evaluated over the summer months, July and August. The next significant deadline is the last day of August. I can just say September 1. Any comments, critiques, challenges, edits, suggestions by either Fair Share Housing Center, New Jersey Builders Association, any interested party, the court, special adjudicator, so on and so forth, would respond with their comments to this report by the end of August. There's a series of additional deadlines that extend out through June of 2026. I'm not going to go through all those. They're all very well detailed in the plan. I just want to assure the planning board one thing. I know this feels like it's rushed and that we have to hurry up and get this plan tonight, but the plan itself is about 50, 60-page document. It's a very long document. Attached to that plan are a series of draft ordinances. I have three of them with me tonight, printed out. I'm not going to start pulling them out and going through them, but if I can draw your attention to anything in this plan as I go through this, I just want to assure you, the plan, these ordinances are all in draft format, all right? And this is where we're going to start our work over summer on editing, preparing, and finalizing these ordinances. We are required, every municipality is required under this new regulation, new law, that we... Every municipality attaches a draft of their zoning ordinances to this document, recognizing that this planning board hasn't had the opportunity to go through line by line of those ordinances. I just want to assure everybody, the draft, council's going to review, planning board's going to review. There is a timeframe that we're going to have to, as a group, go through those ordinances and adopt them officially through the council and the planning board. The final date of the adoption is not till March, I think it's 15 of 2026, but there's a lot of work that has to be done. Basically, wait for the challenges or any comments by September 1, and then we start working on these ordinances and adopt them and file them by March of 2026. Next slide is the overview of the prior round. One slide, it all condensed, presents the prior round, fair share obligations. Again, according to three rounds, 1987 to 1999, our obligation was set at 83 units. Our third round obligation, 1999 and 2025, our obligation is 271. Our fourth round need, our prospective need, which I've gone through tonight, is 208. So, the total is 562. The plan addresses the fourth round, 218. Fourth round compliance, how do we do this and what are the mechanisms? This is what everybody wants to talk about or think about. There's a map that's called Summary of Affordable Housing Plan. You'll see essentially three colors, four colors, I shouldn't say, on this map, and those are the areas where we're either putting development or an overlay. And I'm going to go through one at a time. The first one is the red area, which is the redevelopment plan that we have in place from 25 North to 26th Street. That's the red area that's highlighted on your plan, and that's already located within a green area, which is one of our three overlay areas. What's an overlay area? We're a vacant town. We don't have any land. We have this very large housing obligation. We're required as a municipality to put zoning mechanisms in place that would collect affordable housing units and credits as those properties are developed. And the three areas, I will go through one at a time. First, we have what's called our RDP project, Real Estate Development Potential, which is the 25... North 26th Street Redevelopment Plan. This is the project that has already gone through the redevelopment study phase, the redevelopment, redevelopment plan phase, both adopted by council, and the site plan phase in front of our planning board, resolution adopted April 14, 2022. That site plan, as approved, would collect 25 affordable housing units towards our obligation. Next are the proposed Fourth Round Unmet Need Mechanisms. These are the areas of the town that are already developed. We recognize they're not vacant, and what we're saying at the municipality is, as these three areas of the town are further redeveloped, either through rezoning, redevelopment, or use variances, or site plans in front of the planning board, should the developer elect to submit a plan that includes housing, we would have a set aside to collect those units as those properties are developed. I just want to underline one thing. We're going to go through the three overlay areas. It is not mandatory. It's an overlay that sits on top of or underlying the existing zoning. So, any property owner out there, in any of these overlay areas I'm about to walk through, is not obligated to only build housing moving forward. It's an option. It's an overlay that sits on top of the existing zoning. So, the underlying existing commercial, industrial uses can continue uninterrupted, and new applications can continue to come before the boards and be approved and redeveloped as currently zoned without the housing if they choose, but this is an option. It's called an overlay. First one is North Michigan Avenue corridor overlay. The properties are highlighted in red on the slide. The properties are highlighted in red on the slide. In the plan itself, it goes very great detail of the lot block, street addresses of the properties. So if you want a lot more detail, take a look at the maps, figures, tables in the plan itself. This one slide just covers this overlay area. The draft ordinance I spoke about, that is attached to the appendix of the plan, calls for an overlay density of 20 residential units per acre, should somebody want to choose to build multifamily housing in this area. There's a 20% set aside. And theoretically, if every single property were to be redeveloped with that density, with that set aside, we would collect 106 affordable housing units. It's not required. It's an option. Second one is the Market Street Overlay Zone. There's 17 properties in this overlay zone. Collectively, it's 12.48 plus or minus acres, all based on tax map and GIS data, not individual surveys. There's a draft overlay zone for this attached to your plan that calls for 18 units per acre of multifamily housing. Again, as an overlay on top of existing zoning. Should that, should every one of those properties be built out at that density with the 20% set aside? Meaning that if there's 100 acre units, 100 unit development, 80 of those units would be market rate. Developer can rent them out or sell them at any rate, any number he wants. 20% of those, or 20 out of 100, would have to be de-restricted and set aside for low, moderate, very low affordable households. A lot of detail on the income levels, rent level, all that is addressed within the plan itself. It's highly regulated, it's de-restricted, has to be permanently marketed. Can't just give it to your friends or anybody like that. Has to be permanently marketed, again, to anybody within the region. We would collect 45 affordable units in that overlay area. The third and final overlay area is the former National Tool Site Overlay Zone. Five collective properties, total of 4.33 acres, with an overlay density of 15 units per acre. If the entire site were to be redeveloped with multifamily housing at that density, the borough would collect a potential 13 affordable units. Finally, summary of plan, my last slide. Try and capture all of the numbers for you on one slide. Again, a fourth round obligation is 208. How does our plan intend us to address that number? We have the one redevelopment plan, 25 North and 26th Street. We get 25 affordable housing units out of that inclusionary project. And we get six bonus credits. That's 25% of the 25. So we pick up six additional bonus credits. Bonus credits are incentives provided by the state, encouraging towns to use redevelopment of older sites to create inclusionary projects. So we're not really building one for one. We got to adjust our number. So we pick up 31 total credits out of that one project. And like I said before, North Michigan have the overlay zone, which accrues 106. The Market Street Overlay Zone, which would accrue 45. And the former National Tool Oversight Overlay Zone, which accrues 13. The maximum number of bonus credits that we can get throughout the entire fourth round is 52. So again, we're not building 208 affordable housing units. 52 of those could be bonus credits. There's five pages on bonus credits outlining how to achieve those in the plan. It's well documented if you're interested. The use of redevelopment is one of them. So after the six that we collected on the first project, we're available for 46 more. Now, if a project were to come in in front of the borough council or report to any other area of the town not addressed in this plan and is approved for multifamily housing, the plan has the default mechanism that's called a mandatory set aside ordinance. So if a project comes in that's approved by this board or a redevelopment project approved by council that is outside of any area identified in this plan, the mandatory set aside ordinance automatically kicks in. And we, as a borough, would collect 20% of those units have to be affordable housing units, de-restricted and at development. I say to be determined because I don't know if we're going to get any one of those projects. We can get one, we can get two, we can get none. So I don't have a fixed number that we would collect under the mandatory set aside ordinance. But that's a blanket ordinance throughout the entire borough. That's my presentation. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Mistrada, if I may. When you talk, I didn't see that. When you talk about the other areas, is there a amount of units that this fair share housing plan would kick in? Is it six and above? Is it 10 and above? Or is it two, three?
Five or above.
Five or above.
Yes, sir.
And in... You have to give me a minute. And in the overlay zones, in those areas where maybe a developer comes in and let's say he's in the middle of Market Street, as long he designates that area, industrial can still be on the left and the right, and it can go up in that area. Okay. You could ask a question? You want me to ask?
No.
Okay. So let me, let me, does the board have any other questions? Can I have it? You want me to ask a question?
Yes, 30% of our obligation can be addressed by a restricted house. 30% of our number.
They would have to follow that.
Now, it used to be, it used to be 25%. That's the whole.
Say it again.
One little carrot that they gave towns in the fourth round, there was always 25% of your number. In the fourth round, they increased it to 30%. Would that be 30% of the 20% that is to be, that we would lower rate for at the point?
Yes, that could be, yes.
No, it'd be 30% of your overall obligation. 30% of 208. 30% of our total number tend to be addressed by the de-restricted houses. But is the 208 market rate or the 208 is the low income rate? 208 is our fourth round affordable housing obligation. That means low, very low, moderate income housing.
So quick math based upon what you handed us, the town would have to come up with 819 units to be able to come up with the 20% at the 19th.
Not necessarily. Number one, you immediately take, out of the 208, you immediately subtract 25%. You can achieve 25% of your number through bonus credits. So you take 25% out of the 208. And out of that remaining number, and the plan will go into a lot of detail on it, the town could achieve some of your obligation through group homes or those special needs housing. And in those cases, there's other similar mechanisms where, just say you had a group home, you had a special needs unit come in and it had four or five bedrooms. Get one credit per bedroom, not per unit, on those areas.
But those are exceptions.
Those are, those are absolutely.
And if you're still looking at it from that point, if you're taking 25% off, then if you take 25% off the 800, this town of Kenilworth is then still looking upwards of 600 units that were supposed to be able to place in a town that has no living properties. And one of the designated areas, I believe, is still this way.
Mr. Mistrada should have a chance to correct that, I may, Mr. Grimaldi, before we get to the call. The town is under no obligation to build 800 units a town. Mr. Mistrada?
Right, we're not. As I said, we're what's called a, we're not, we're called, we're called a vacant land municipality. We recognize that we don't have, and the state recognizes that we don't have vacant land. We're not a western municipality, western district, that has acres, hundreds of acres of developable land for housing. So we fall under a threshold of what's called vacant land. So they recognize that. And what happens? You create, your number is broken down into two phases. It's called a RDP, the Real Estate Development Potential. That is a project that, the redevelopment plan on, that's already been approved. Perfect example, 25 North and 26th Street. That falls into the category of RDP, Real Estate Development Potential. It's approved by our planning board.
Yeah, there's permits board.
I'm sorry?
There's permits board.
There's permits board, it's fully engineered, you have developer, so on and so forth. That falls into the RDP category. All of our own numbers fall into what's called a unmet need category, which recognizes that we don't have land, so we should rezone and build all these houses. So we put an overlay on top of the existing zones that we have already today. Those underlying property owners are not obligated to build housing. Our borough is not obligated to build housing. What it does is it provides an option that if you're in one of those three overlay areas, you can put developed housing. After those ordinances are fully officially adopted, they can come in and build them at the density set aside in the plan.
And where are those densities set by the state?
They're set by my office through conversations.
We rate it to the center of town. We want that there. But each of the sites have a different density.
Yes. And that is done in...
I got you. And the one site that you have on this, I believe about 20 years ago, was designated for seniors houses. So if that's already there on the book, that would be one way it can get developed.
That's correct. And I'll go further that as we work through and further add these draft ordinances, we want to put, we want to put language in there that we don't want just, should one of those corridors, and I'm only going to pick out the one from Michigan Avenue corridor just for starters, but we don't want apartments should be all multifamily or five open in a row go multifamily. You don't want just multifamily, multifamily, multifamily. So we require commercial, retail, non-residential on the first floor with apartments above it. So you don't turn apartment building, apartment building after one after another. But we haven't gotten that far yet because we haven't officially adopted those ordinances.
Understood. And Kevin, I understand, but we're getting presented with, and I know he explained to us the exceptions and how you get from 208 to the 35, which is, as he suggested, the detail is in the report that we have received. But based upon the 208, 208 is the 20% of, sorry, 20% of... The 208 would represent 20 or...
208 is, the 208 is our number.
Of the low income. But the low income is a percentage of the total.
Yes, the low, as a, as a, as a affordable housing project is developed, it can be developed in many different ways. The most usual way is either through 100% affordable housing project where every unit we have to develop is low or moderate income. And they're literally rare. They are rare. Or an inclusionary housing project where there's a set aside, as we have over on the redevelopment plan. That was a 15% set aside, increasing it to 20% set aside. Those are the two most common methods. A lot of towns use group homes also for special needs housing. That's becoming such a mandatory board. And there are additional bonus credits provided, so that's becoming more and more popular. There's groups that specialize in that type of housing. But those are the, those are the top two, 100% affordable and inclusionary. And underneath that, group homes and special needs housing. I'll put those four in the top categories.
But those numbers, the 35 or 208, represent percentages of projects.
The 208 is not a percentage. The 208 is our fourth round constitutional obligation through 2035. 208, that's 208, that's our prospective need. That's our affordable housing number. That's not four, I start taking any percentages.
But reduction?
Yes.
The 208 is of, as Kevin said, low, moderate, or correct?
Yeah. The numbers are, I don't want to get too granular tonight, but everything I'm talking about, these numbers are really broken down further into three subcategories.
Yes.
Those three subcategories are moderate income, low income, and very low income. So, and then each one has certain income thresholds for whether it's one family member all the way up to eight family members as far as the maximum income of that family in that particular unit for that particular subset of income category. Very low, low, or moderate.
Again, my point, that, that it are a percentage of the development. As you said, the 26th Street one had 60%. So that number would be a percentage of the overall. So the 208 or 35, depending on your exceptions, would actually end up in getting a lot more units than if they got developed.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, absolutely. Yes, understood. Mr. Mistrada, I have a couple of questions. With that going back and forth just starts to raise them all. So if you have 13 affordable units set aside on a particular property, particularly National Tool, did I understand correctly that that is your 20% number? And in that 20% number, it is, it could be affordable, low income, moderate income, and very low income within that 20%, within the 13 variable? So it could be that whole range? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's required. And those are all state regulations. We have no say in this whatsoever, but it's all, it's all under the UHAC regulations, moderate, low, very low income of those 13 units.
If I am a developer and I want to do something, is the percentage negotiable? Can I come in and say, listen, I could do this, but I can only do 12%?
No. Well, I strike that. Once those ordinances are adopted by our council?
That's it.
That's it. Now, could they come in here and ask you for a variance, a waiver, or go to the council and ask for a reduction? Anything's possible. I don't see a justifiable reason that is going to be on our books and we're saying that's how we're going to address it. So I would say the 20% is not going to move. What I do see in some towns is that 20% increases.
Okay.
It goes higher.
So, so I would like to focus on, I guess it's called the pink area on 12th Street, National Tool. If I look at the entire map, I don't have a real problem with anything off... Let me choose my words wisely. On the outskirts of town, where the 26th Street and the Market Street and the industrial area. That one National Tool is 4.33 acres, which represents 15 units per acre. It's 60-plus units. And that, that's right dead center of town. Is there an adjustment that we could make to not have that particular overlay zone there and have it in another location?
I would, my, my strong recommendation would be that the plan is adopted as it is. And then we have a period of time over the summer. If you wanted to switch out an area, lead an area, and then put a different area that would provide at least the same amount of affordable units should be developed. That would be an opportunity to do it then.
Those areas out by Route 22, I think would...
I think, I, from what I just heard, I think you're saying we need to, it would be prudent to adopt the plan as it sits so we could meet the criteria. And at that point, we have a couple of months, I guess you said, August 30th, up to that point?
The major thresholds are September 1st, the last day of August, September 1st, for all the comments to come back. I would love to see what comments, if any, we get from that list of groups that I mentioned. And at the same time, we have these draft ordinances. Again, they're only draft, but we have to make them official. And that would be an opportunity. And I think it's saving money, time, and resources that we have. And I think it's saving money, time, and resources that we have, like our report form. How did we do? What's the comments? And we take those comments, and then we also look if we could, all right, let's remove this site and a different site. I would do it all at one time at that point.
Okay. Mr. Gromalvi, you had something?
I was just going to point, the section that you pointed out, again, was the one that I believe this board approved as senior housing about 20, 25 years ago.
Not this board, but the plan?
Well, not the members of this board, this board.
Okay. So we could look into that, but I, I think, you know, my, my question was a valid question, and the answer was spot on. We could, if we need to do something and we have to meet, it's, it's not him saying, hey, this is a great idea. This is what we're being told. And more or less.
Again, this plan is, I want to encourage one more thing. I know we're under this deadline, self-statement post deadline. These plans are not etched in stone, and that's it. It can't change for 10 years. These plans are expected to be amended, changed, expanded, modified, if you will, if other properties are better suited. You're allowed to amend your plan. The only thing I'll come back to tell you is, this is the threshold, all right? If we have a better site that's more suited for unrestricted housing in our town rather than this one, we can make an argument to remove it, but we need to replace it, fold it back into the plan.
Okay. Kevin, did you have something? I saw you shaking your head this way and then this way, and I didn't know if you were... Simon says do this.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mistrada has done a wonderful job of summarizing a document that has to be adopted before the 30th of June, which is next Monday. So therefore, there's not a lot of options available to this board at this moment, other than to present a housing element to the state that's been endorsed by the Borough Council. However, as Mr. Mistrada has also pointed out, there are a number of things that are in draft that can be changed in the near future. I would point out, this board is no doubt aware, that this board has not been consulted about this plan since it was started by the council in December. This plan was prepared without any input from this board. No doubt, the board is aware that we've already approved one affordable housing unit on the Boulevard of the Duncan Doris. No doubt, this board is aware that over the last 10 years, we have been trying and in our resolutions, demanding the collection of affordable housing funds. And as we have learned over the last year or two, some of those were ignored, but we nonetheless have over $80,000 in the bank, thanks to the diligence of this board. And perhaps over the next few months, the Borough Council, who is in charge of this, and our mayor, will see fit to let the planning board be part of this, planning of this document so that your voices can be heard and guide this as only you can, because you're the experts in land use. You know this borough. You know the ebbs and flows of applications. Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you for that. Mr. Mistrada?
I have a question.
Oh, I thought you wanted to.
The significance of the 500-plus cumulative units, including the previous.
Very, very good question. Your, each, each round in affordable housing in Jersey get two numbers. You get prospective needs, which is your rehab obligation. That rehab obligation goes to zero at the end of each round, and you're assigned a new number. That's one. The prospective needs, which is, I commonly refer to it as new construction, that's what everyone's really paying attention to, that's the 208. That's our 208 for this round. With your prospective numbers, prospective need numbers, they do not zero out at the end of the plan or end of the cycle or end of the round, the cumulative. They just keep adding on top of each other. And 10 years from now, despite having no land, you're going to get another number. And that's going to just, just going to keep.
How, no, it's okay. How firm is this deadline? Are we going to accept it on this deadline, July 1st? I mean, the council hasn't even seen this plan. We don't even have a meeting until July 1st. I mean, I don't know. The first time I'm seeing this is tonight, and hearing anything. Right? So, I mean, I don't see how it can even happen by July 1st. We don't even have a meeting till July 3rd.
I defer to, I have to defer to our affordable housing attorney on the deadlines, because they've all been part of this process.
I don't see how it's possible. I mean, I'm looking at this for the first time tonight. It's June 24th. Our next meeting is July 3rd. July 2nd, I'm sorry, July 2nd. Just after that.
So what are the penalties? Are any fines we don't give them time?
I don't want to start speaking as an attorney. One thing is you lose any immunity that you have, the immunity protection, you're out of compliance, which is pretty significant. But I want to stop there and I defer to affordable housing attorneys on that subject.
Mr. Gromalvi?
You said that Kathy or the clerk, they have copied the full report?
Yes.
As do you. One was sent by Ms. Maschea the last week.
Everybody, everybody did get this last week.
Last report.
Everybody got it. This is not where, for a better term, choice of words, we're not blindsided here. We got this report. But we did get it.
Last Monday.
Yeah, I think it was sent out on the 13th. I'm sorry?
This for the full one?
The 300-plus page full report. Mr. Mistrada, as a courtesy to this board, sent out his outline to us this afternoon so you would see what his presentation was. And I applaud him for his cooperation.
Yeah. So, does the governing body get this as well?
You have to rehearse it. It has to go to the governing body. That's what I'm saying. We only, we have a meeting on July 2nd.
That's up to Mr. Serenian.
I'm sorry?
It's nothing to do with this board. It's up to Mr. Serenian. It's his problem.
It's a planning board document. It's the housing element of the master. It's a planning board document that's approved by the planning board by resolution. The law says it then needs to be endorsed by the Borough Council.
Okay.
And whether or not, whether or not if the planning board approves, the plan adopts the resolution, and council doesn't adopt, the endorsing resolution until July 1st or any date past June 30th, I'm not touching that question. That's a legal question, and I don't want to, I'm not sure of that answer.
Okay. Does everybody, you guys understand this? Everybody understand what we're confronted with?
Mayor Chris, Mayor and Council, this is the first time you guys are understanding this stuff, this is existing. You had to vote for this by the end of the month.
We don't even have a meeting until the 2nd of July. It's our next meeting.
Sir, should I read a special meeting? So why don't we just do our obligation, right?
I think, I think the planning board has to stand on its own feet and do what the planning board does. If the packet is before us now and we saw this, which I read through, not all 361, but I did read through, I'm thinking that everyone else did the same. I can't speak for the governing body. We can only speak for the planning board, as we said that a million times. What's in front of us is the diligence that we have to perform to meet a criteria. So I think that's where we need to stand. If the deadline is first, before the council meeting, we can't control that. If they deem it fit to have a special, or if they deem it fit that the attorney says, no, we have that seven days grace because the days fell like this, or there was technical issue, that can't be our problem.
Did I miss something? Where does it say that the council has to adopt the endorsing resolution by July 1st?
Didn't you amend it fair housing yet?
Okay, so it's not on this timeline now.
It's a planning board document.
Goes back to last year's legislation, March.
Yeah, which seems very unreasonable, if we have till the 30th to adopt. What we need to adopt, that gives them, they don't have to see that we've adopted it before they can. But the endorsing plan, and basically they have 24 hours to do it.
Everybody's had these dates since March 24th. The fact that we are being presented with this document on this date is not our choosing. It is someone else's choosing. Our obligation is to adopt a housing element by June 30th if we wish to be in accordance with the state legislation. If we choose otherwise, we can as a board. That's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not suggesting any of that. I'm just saying that in most cases, things tend to get done toward the end of timelines, not just in Kennesaw, everywhere. And so the fact that the state would allow 24 hours to, for the board, assuming the board does it, any board does it on the last day, June 30th, and then the endorsing document has to be done the very next day, is completely ridiculous. But that's just a commentary on our legislature. Can I hear from Councilman Gries?
There was a court case, essentially invalidating affordable housing provisions in home facilities where they may kick it back.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear him.
There was a recent case, not summarized, it's best one can.
Can you talk a little louder? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're having trouble. It might go worse.
I thought that one worked.
Doesn't sound like it.
There was, there was a recent case, I believe this is what you're referring to, about a year or two ago, that was circulated, yeah, invalidating the directive. The directive that boards were being, municipalities were being held to was not only that you have to adopt this housing plan before June 30th, but municipalities also had to adopt, the governing bodies had to fully adopt every ordinance and redevelopment study and redevelopment plan that created a zoning mechanism for affordable housing and identified within the plan. So you had to lawyer for zoning ordinances, redevelopment study, redevelopment plans, fully approved and attached as an appendix to the plan that you have tonight. Well, this law said, and everybody challenged that, was there, the amended fair housing act does not say that. Then a directive came out afterwards that said you had to do that. So there's a conflict in rules in the law, and while the directive in the law, that went to court and they issued a legislative decision saying that that's not accurate. You only have, municipalities only have to adopt it, the plan itself by June 30th. And then the deadlines that are in amended fair housing act that extend out to March 2026 remain in place for adopting all the ordinances and everything else.
Okay.
So, one other question. If, so to the builder, if they decide that you have senior housing, you can't say, hey, well, if you're going to build, we want to see your house.
We're allowed as a municipality, we have our obligations, we're allowed as a municipality to say, this is where we want our unrestricted housing, and this is where we want our market rate housing. So we can differentiate.
We can't use senior housing to fulfill our obligation.
Not for 10%.
I'm up here. 30%. Have that 208.
Excuse me?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm sorry.
You have the 300 pages, you have Mr. Mistrada, and I say you do our obligation. You vote yes, sir. Now let's move on.
Thank you, Ms. Ladadi. Mr.?
I would agree. We're, as Kevin said, this is not overdoing, but we're, we're in this position. I think we're charged with doing what we have to do. But per our conversation before this meeting started, I think we're definitely going to need to have some type of meeting so that we can discuss this before the September 1st obligation, if we want to make any kind of recommendations.
Wait a minute. What do you mean we need to have a meeting before when?
The, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mistrada?
Mr. Mistrada said that the next time that we have to, we have the opportunity to get any recommendations. The mayor had suggested something about North Michigan, which I think from our master planning, we already had mentioned something of those areas. But if we want to make any of those comments, we have to get it probably to him well before September 1st, so he can organize it and put it in before the September 1st deadline. If we don't have a meeting before then, how are we going to do that?
Mr. O'Brien?
It may be best, Chairman, to let the process run its course at the council level, and let's hope and pray that they inform us of how the ordinances will be drafted, and hope and pray that they include us in that discussion. And then we have to wait for them. If we're included, wonderful. If we're not included, we have to wait for them, present them to us, and at that point, we can have our say in what they are.
So if I understand you correctly, that this map that you drew, we can make changes through.
Yes.
By September 1st.
I would recommend, my opinion would to wait until after September 1st, so we don't spend any, we just, I would wait and see what type of response that we get. So that if I do a report and I know it's going to be judged and critiqued by, I'm making this up, five groups. Could be one, it could be more. I would like to see what those critiques are, what those comments are, and then I also have more feedback from the planning board. And then my recommendation would be post September 1st, after Labor Day, reconvene with everybody's comments and amend it one time.
To summarize, you would say, go through the process. Let's get this done. We, we meet the compliance, and we understand where we're going from there. And we still have enough of time to, to reconvene. So you don't need a, a meeting before September.
I do not need a meeting before September for this topic.
Okay, I got a lot of hints. Mr. Pantene?
I'm sorry. I'm good.
Mr. Pantene?
I just want to say that I agree with the other members that said, and I think we should, you know, amend the vote on it. But I have to ask you something because I want to hear the responses. I know you were referring to the fair housing council, and I, you know, got around to seeing him. That's on her. But yeah, I'm just saying is that, what do you think? Like, you can't talk to him, but how accurate do you think that he would be if he was here to make about that June 30th?
Indeed.
About somebody.
Nick, I have to ask you to speak up. We can't hear you up here.
The council, I, I personally.
I think it would be a lot, I think you'd be yelling louder than I am.
Okay, so, so in my other, like, I've heard the spiel already, and I've heard Mr. Serenian. When he mentioned Mr. Serenian, he's the fair housing council for City of Livingston also. And he's very adamant about June 30th, about getting that, that plan in. Whether it's got to be adjusted or not about getting that, that plan in. And I'm not saying that we have to do that. I'm just saying that, um, no, Mr. Serenian, who is that guy? And getting those numbers in. And I believe Mr. O'Brien said, or Mr. Sharla said, is that it's not necessarily about fines or penalties, but if you miss the June 30 deadline, the municipality becomes open to lawsuits. Right now, you're kind of protected.
You lose immunity.
Right, you lose your immunity, right.
You're a non-compliant town, and you're holding for whatever comes your way.
Right. That's just, I just wanted to put that on the table, so.
I got it.
Not as, you know, I'm just making available knowledge that.
Did you want to co-tail, or were you all saying the same thing?
I just want to ask one thing. You said, you know, it may be looked at by one or five groups. In your mind, who are those people that are looking at? Number one, there's the court. The judge assigns a penalty. The judge assigns to region a region, and he's already reviewed our court, he's already issued a court order in March 27, 2025. So we have the amended fair housing act put in, it abolished COA, removed COA. COA's gone. Council on Affordable Housing is gone. It replaced COA with what's called the program. I did not make up these terms. The program consists of seven retired Mount Laurel judges. The only thing they do is Mount Laurel for the last 50 years. I'm not saying they all. We are assigned to one of those seven retired Mount Laurel judges who. We're, we are assigned to one of those seven retired Mount Laurel judges who this plan goes to on June 30th. That Mount Laurel judge is one. Number two, the Mount Laurel judge assigned to Kennelworth is assigned to what's called a special adjudicator. It used to be called special master, fourth round, they changed it, they got rid of master, they included adjudicator. That person is a licensed professional planner, who does nothing but affordable housing in New Jersey. This report goes to that planner. So that's two. Number three is, I'm not saying they will or they won't, but Fair Share Housing Center is one of the groups that has an opportunity, their planners and their staff will review this plan most likely, is three. Number four, almost all the other municipalities, not Kennelworth, were challenged in January on the numbers by the New Jersey Builders Association. That's four. Five, six, and above would be any interested party who has a property in Kennelworth, who wants to be part of this plan, or objects to the plan, or needs the plan, or critique it, I don't know what, fill the blank. So those are five, and if can't be more, you're in a lot stronger position if the plan is adopted and we meet the deadline. I would not, at least my recommendation is to adopt the plan, see what transpires over July and August, reconvene post-Labor Day, get all of the reports, critiques, comments, criticisms, add the board's comments, council's comments, and put them all in the pile, and then we sit down with the plan and figure out the next steps. I tend to tell you that the next major step after that, if it's challenged, is December 31st, if there's a challenge, you have to, the councils would have to address that. So we have six months, not six months, we have, September 30th to December 31st.
Okay.
But when those come back, we still have time to add. We were the governing body, whether they let us in or not.
I have a question. Was anyone on the governing body, these zones that you picked, was, was this discussed with anyone on the governing body?
Yes, there was, there were two, at least two attendees, and I was on. Uh, I don't have a list of attendees with me, but...
The one in the governing, I don't, I mean, I, the mayor wasn't on, on that committee?
Chairman, with all due respect, that's not a board issue.
Right.
Okay. We have to be careful.
I can, I can give you the groups that were on, that was on one of these meetings.
The mayor's the mayor, and she certainly is going to assert her authority, but this is not the spot for it.
Okay, um, if there's no more questions, um, as far as procedure is concerned, because this is the first time I've had the pleasure of doing one of these, does this at all need to be open to the public? It does. Are you through, Mr. Mistrada? Okay. Would someone?
Mistrada will be available for questions if there are. Correct, sir?
Someone?
I make a motion to open the meeting to the public for comment on this matter.
Okay, motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Who?
Clemente.
Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is anyone from the public wishing to speak about this presentation and this fair share, uh, presentation? No one? Seeing none?
Make a motion to close, um, this matter to the public?
Yeah. Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Grimaldi, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, uh, right now, we heard everything, it, it sounded to me like most of us understood this, and we have to do our diligence. So is there a motion to, what is this, approve the resolution, or approve, what are we approving here tonight?
Adopt the resolution, Mr. Parrot, for the fourth round housing element of June 2025.
Exactly what he said. Made by Mr. Grimaldi, seconded by Mr. Pantina, roll call, please.
Um, Mr. Vaserno?
Yes.
Mayor Karlovic abstained. Uh, Councilman Gores?
So we're voting on basically what you presented tonight, correct?
Resolution.
The resolution. So this resolution, just for an explanation?
Adopt the plan.
Adopt the plan, and then it goes to the governing body, and then you do it, what you will.
Adopt the housing element as a document of the planning board.
Um, I'll abstain.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladati?
No.
Uh, Mr. Colella?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
Yes.
And Mr. Paglisi?
Yes.
Okay, so, here we go.
Chairman, I want to say that your presentation was wonderful. My questions were just trying to get a mark for me, they were, they were not...
Mr. Mistrada has done an outstanding job under difficult situations and conditions, and I think he is to be applauded.
Yeah, very much so.
Thank you.
Boy, could we have used a slideshow or something like that, would have been so much easier.
About an hour?
Mr. Mistrada, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Difficult job this planning board business is. Okay.
Next.
What are we up to? The application?
New business.
Is that right?
Yeah, the front fence.
We're putting off durum, to lift the application.
Oh, we're not doing durum, right?
We're not doing durum.
No, the amount.
Okay, so, um, that's the durum resolution, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Mr. David, earlier, we talked about the durum resolution, and we are not going to do that tonight, we're going to wait until the September meeting, correct? It's all the way on the bottom, I missed it too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, in our workshop, we talked a little bit about this, so is there a motion to move the durum resolution to the September meeting? Motion made by Mr. Grimaldi, seconded by Mr. Paglisi, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's added away. New business. We have application 24008, front fencing 25, 205 North 17th Street. Who's here for that? Kathy, we okay on the application?
Yeah.
I'm sorry? We're always off on August, we don't plan anything for us in July, we have nothing, except our resolution, so that our resolution can go until September. Okay. Sir, why don't you identify yourself, tell who you are?
This is all... Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of board, residents of...
Excuse me, sir, will you? If I may. What you need to do is state your name, and spell your last name for the record, and then we can continue, okay?
And the microphone doesn't work, so we're gonna have to...
Yeah, you're gonna have to project.
Gym school teacher, boy.
My name is Quentin Rodriguez Harrison.
Harrison? Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear you. No. Rodriguez? Is your first name Harrison?
No, it's Quentin, sorry.
Okay, Quentin Rodriguez Harrison, okay. I'm sorry.
You get to name later.
What's his name, his name?
Let me swear you in first. If you could raise your right hand. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth? Thank you. I'm assuming you're the applicant, and you're the owner of the property?
Yes. I represent, I represent my wife, who's sort of also the issuing...
Okay.
Luke.
Do you have to answer your question?
Christian.
And Christian.
Okay, guys, if you raise your right hand, with regard to this and any other applications this evening, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
I did, dude.
He did this, I think.
That's the second time you dropped your wallet.
Thank God, you got your right.
I'm sorry we keep interrupting you?
No, we're...
Okay, you have the floor.
Uh, a question. Can I be able to get that from you, so I can show what's...
Yes, sir.
Do these lights, do these lights go off?
Yeah, yes. Wow, that air conditioning's so much better now. Yeah, cool. If you got it, oh, oh.
Uh, do you want me to pull that?
Can you?
Sure.
Oh, it's okay, Kathy, it's okay, thank you, Kathy.
My name is Quentin Rodriguez Harrison. I stand before you representing myself and my wife, Michelle Rodriguez, to request a variance for our front yard fence of our home located at 205 North 17th Street. This is a picture of the home, five of the fence. This is a picture of the home, absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks, Kathy.
We are first-time homeowners, we purchased our home with good faith, we relied heavily on the builder's guidance when we discussed adding a fence. When we reached out to the builder, we were told it would be fine to add a front fence, and no one freely aware, the ordinance were hitting front yard fences, or that a permit was needed. We were generally surprised to receive the notice of violation. We never had any intent of violating thorough regulations. As new homeowners navigate complex systems, we entered in good faith with no malice. This fence has not just got aesthetics, my wife, Mikel, is a 100% permanently and totally disabled neurotrophic veteran of 17 years. She has served three overseas tours, and is charged with each with deep psychological wounds. She lives with PTSD, heightened vigilance, and social environments. A physical barrier like a fence, especially in the front yard where people and individuals pass frequently, raises her peace and a sense of security, is a medical and emotional necessity, not just a preference. I have some documents to pass. One, two, some groups that I may approach?
Sure. Are these copies we can keep? Is it easy to cover?
They can be covered.
Do you have enough, Quentin?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you'll see the documents, this is showing her, showing her 100% totally disabled PTSD disability. Uh, in addition, we have a letter from her therapist that was talking about how this type situation has been, is a hardship for her, and under stress, her children's own home. Uh, in addition, we have a letter signed from a neighbor directly next to us, at 205 North 17th Street, uh, in which there is support of the fence, and there's no issues with it, they understand the necessity of the fence. And I believe, uh, the other page is, we're just gonna be able to adopt, and I have a picture of the property, which I, I don't know this place.
I'm gonna mark the first letter, A1, the evidence, the, uh, the medical. Thank you. I'll mark, I'll mark that A1, um, factor, there's actually two, two letters. The neighboring fence support, we can put in the file, but the law, unless the neighbor's here, the law doesn't allow us to consider this, or, or, um, letters of support, or in opposition, or, um, things like that, because they're not here to say yes or no or answer questions. But we can certainly keep the letter, keep the picture, I'll mark that A2, and then A1 will be the, uh, the veterans' affairs letter, and the letter from, uh, the counseling service.
I understand. We have some letters, because they were looking for them, so...
You have a newborn? Okay.
Mr. Rodriguez Harrison, if these, uh, studies electronically, and if you cheat our services, tomorrow, next day. Thank you very much.
No questions. All right. So I mentioned being medical, emotional necessity, and not just a preference. So beyond that, we live, we're working, close to school, where traffic is fast and unpredictable. We recycle days, not accounting for the greasy, blowed-up store yard. There are stray cats, we see people littering laws, defecating, which other residents long without cleaning it up. The fence office maintains a levelness, privacy, and security. Additionally, we understand the legislative intent behind ordinance was verification. Likely aimed at preventing proliferation of dilapidated or unsightly chain-linked fences. We believe our well-maintained, classic white picket fence actually enhances the neighborhood's appearance. Building a home with white picket fences is a part of the American dream, it represents care, stability, and pride towards property. Our fence is not an extort, it is almost by definition a symbol of the aesthetic appeals this ordinance was created to protect. We are willing to modify the fence's placement, as it has extended a bit too far for our liking, and hope this will help satisfy the board's concerns. We are asking for a reasonable accommodation. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on disability, and encourages municipalities to provide necessary accommodations to allow individuals with disabilities to use the enjoyment of their properties. In this case, the fence is an essential part of making our home safe and livable for Mikel. We also note in a previous case, application number 01-030, on the September 20th, 2001, the board granted a similar front yard fence variance to homeowners in town. That application involved a dedicated fence that was found to enhance the look of the neighborhood, particularly in comparison, comparison to less attractive fencing sites. Like that applicant, we believe our fence has charm, is a candidate of our street, and presents no detriment to public good. We are willing, as they were, to adjust placement where high is needed, for remaining alive with the borough's vision. We hope your board can weigh not only the technical aspects of the terrace, but also the human ones. Our family did not accept the size of the wall, we simply followed guidance and turned up to speed complete. We are willing to adjust, but we respectfully ask for the opportunity to retain the fence as being a substantial part of our home, and will be, and appreciate the consideration.
Is that all the slides you have?
Uh, the whole slides I have, of course, I need to...
No, 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 I didn't know if that was, you're done with that part of your presentation?
Yes, sir. Any questions that go up?
Okay. Well, we see the fence, we see the house, and we know what you're here. Okay. Okay. Does any board members have any questions?
I have questions, Mr....
Okay, again, we have to speak up, guys, okay?
Um, I understand that, uh, there's no fences allowed in the front door, or just at the front door, or what's, where is actually the law?
Fences are not allowed in the front yard.
So in this case, it would be the whole front house, for the most part, right? In this hap, in this case, it would be the whole front house, for the most part, right?
The area that's paint fenced in?
Yeah.
Of the grass area, yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
The way that fence is situated at the moment...
Mind you, way, I didn't know it was back there.
No, no, it's fine, I've seen through the pictures.
Okay.
The way that the fence is situated today is, I, I would assume, based upon the sketch and the picture, it's on township property at the moment.
Yeah, right now, it's too far extended, the front house.
And when I went by the house, there's no fence at the bottom with the steps, uh, there's no fence protecting access to the front of the steps, correct?
No, there's not. The fence is on the side of the street.
If somebody walked up your driveway, they can walk unimpeded from the driveway to your front door, unimpeded by the...
They walk around, yes, and there's two cameras, they see it.
But the fence isn't...
The fence is not blocking the...
I'm sure the police and firemen, but too, but right now, it's not impeding anybody from getting to your front door.
No, we, we know the, uh, the city of the town, so it's...
Mr. Mazio?
Did you hire a contractor? So, are you working, so, he's all sort of building, um, the builder, currently he's putting up 201 right next to us, and he said, hey, we're gonna want a front yard fence, at some point, just have that sense of security, you know, show my life, it's all right. Uh, and he told us it was, when we were probably letting him know, and his team would take care of it. So when we were ready, we let him know, and his team took care of it. I guess he saw a kind of defense in the other property. They have this one, the most obvious gap was how much it was...
was empty, and when the gentleman was doing it, it was over the two people. He told me if he was just gonna set a little car, a little more in from the trees, so that I don't get in trouble, and I was just like, whatever that means. But, yeah, there was no permit sign, there was no... Whatever they did, it didn't go to the top or...
Who was the builder?
Mr. Harrison, who was the builder?
Pentum.
When you say you're builder, can we kill that light now? Are you done?
Oh, yes, sir.
How do I look in blue? Thank you. When you say the builder, did he build you that house as well?
He built both properties there. He built 205 and 2001.
So here's a gentleman who's a builder, has an LLC, and he didn't know enough to come up here to pull a permit. Okay. So first, let me start out, you know, I started out with that, and I should have said, I appreciate and thank you for coming up here tonight, and your wife, thank you for her service, and the disability, I understand quite well, and we get that. The problem here is, is that you have a fence that needs a permit, there's proper setbacks that need to be taken, and we need to look at that. Now, you also recited the American Disabilities Act, which also states, if you read further, that you need to comply with the rules and regulations of the borough and the state and the town. So with that being said, we have to figure out how you, as a resident of Kennelworth, can be here comfortable, and your wife can have a comfortable place to stay, correct? And that's what's in front of the board tonight. So... I need some help.
Do you want me to ask master planning questions?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez Harrison, did you also share?
No, my dad was...
Would it be your opinion that this application would advance various purposes of municipal land use laws, such as accommodating residential uses, accommodating disabled populations, veteran populations, along those lines? Would it be your opinion as to whether or not this application has any impact upon your neighbors, positive or negative?
I feel like it doesn't. That's why we have a neighborhood differently, builders of nice, write the letter, which we get, that doesn't count, because it's a bust, too. Just the fact that before you was even known, and we're all shooting with it, and say, hey, we're looking at this mess, but appeared that it should be, and it doesn't. We just have again, we got posted today, it says, hey, go with the letter. And I said, hey, this fence is not an issue to you, and I would appreciate if you signed the letter of support. If it is an issue, then please... And you signed it, and it didn't issue the neighbors. My neighbors are ex-orphs, they live at 207. They're wonderful people, and they don't order that fence at all. They don't have any issues. They go to their clothes, it's not a problem. I got the Ms. Nett, who was in the school crossing address area, she couldn't believe it would all be this in the first place. I got some great support from neighbors in terms of dealing with the fence, and it just feels like it was someone we never thought of. Of course, I think the new homeowners, and they think the fence is a distraction, so I started reading all ordinances and that. So it just is a tough place, because if someone... Not necessarily, I didn't even know about this still, but I talked to my builder, and gave him a team that said, you wanna do this break, they draw the permit, they draw the papers to you, to say, hey, we can't proceed without doing this one thing. Then I agree, but that didn't happen. So I'm doing a reversal. The fence has been there for, I think about nine months now. Haven't had any issues. We haven't had cars crashing because of low visibility. It's just been taken care of. So right now, it's just working backwards, because they have control over getting this set up properly first time, because I just don't want to do it. So I feel like it doesn't affect our neighbors, and maybe, like I said, it enhances the look of the home, helps or allows it to home, and it just makes it more like community, it feels nice.
Do you see any detriment to the neighbors or the neighborhood?
I don't see any detriment, though.
Do you see any advantages?
Any advantages, advantages for the neighborhood or... For us, I can say, number one, just when there are just kind of messy, windy days that they've been through, recycling, so long over, having the fence block people's carboard is fine, now, from across the avenue, it's been... When it comes down to benefits for the community, I feel like increasing the property values is a long time. I think that's a strong word. I feel both ways, both there, both of them work off each other. It helps support that corner, and it's really beautiful and new. So I feel like it really maintains that verification standard that ordinance was looking to enforce, where we don't want to have old visuals, we want something new and fresh and consistent.
So in an attempt to summarize the testimony, and not put any words in anybody's mouth with any signs, my understanding is that you're saying is that because of your wife's service-related disability, that this fence, according to her Veterans Administration Counselor, it's something that is medically necessary in her being...
It's not just according to the counselor. Counselor does reinforce that. She needs that, also, hyper vigilance, PTSD. She can not stand social situations. Fence in a restaurant, she knows what the fence is. Sitting in a location where she can see the entire area of the restaurant, knows how to handle. I learned always, when I started dating her, because I didn't know how that mindset was. Then I learned, going with her, how it opens, and how it's a constant buzz into... Prior to the fence, especially the school, there were people going by, it was just kids, and people just moving, but it's just a sense of, she come by, it's going over here, it's over here, what's she doing, come back, it was just, she was never able to settle. And living with her, and with two kids now, and with her doll, it keeps her focused on things that matter, and not to be distracted and worried about her happening around us.
Should the board wish to treat this in a favorable fashion, would you be willing to submit a proper application and a necessary adjust the fence so that it is in the proper location?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we definitely want to do it as if we were doing this from scratch. We want to make sure everything's done correctly, really conforms, completely fine with movement and movement spec. We don't have any problems.
Have I said anything contrary to your intent?
I don't think so.
Have I said anything in terms of an opinion, other than putting facts on the table?
Do the same, guys.
Chairman?
Well, thank you. Does anybody want to ask any questions or add to that? Mr. Pantino, first?
I have a couple of questions, I'm sorry.
Just speak up, please, Donnis.
Yes, I will. I also think, like you're sort of saying, I'm sorry I have to ask this question, but I have to ask this question. I asked a question about the fence in the front door. Most, you said your wife, her quality of life purposes enjoys the security of the front yard being fenced off, although I think Mr. Goddard just reminds, oh, we're gonna drive it, we're gonna...
Yes, it's very important, so good about that.
I think a lot of people feel secure being in the yard, away from chaos outside, in which case, that and the fence don't have a problem. Does she have, does she have any solace there? I'm just asking a question.
I'm sorry, so you're saying, does she have any solace in the yard?
The rear yard.
In the rear yard?
It is permitted, I think, to the front yard, where the fence is.
Yeah, I think the rear yard was where the hammer of home. The front yard is where we have that, first of all, we have like better light, and we have this, where she is pulling doors back before she can come in. With the backyard, it definitely gives her a sense of solace there. With the front yard, we have a porch, we have chairs, she has her wind chimes. Everything's so that she can sit down, she can do work, she can relax, she can see what's going on, and nothing is just like running out.
I understand everything you're saying, I really do. And what you're proposing, or what you're asking for, and it's right on the application, so I'm not putting any words in your mouth, is what you're asking for the personal hardship, whereas it could be verified, or it could be decided by the board to give that, but I'm just saying is that, and everything that Mr. O'Brien asked you was very good, but the one shade that I see here, I'm just putting it on the table, is that this request on you for personal hardship, however, and even though your neighbors are supportive of it, or support some, the potential of it is that it sets a precedent. So what about the other house that Mr. Pentum built, or the other houses that have one fence out front, and it's by, I don't know, justified reasoning for it, the board will be at that point in time to say, for the applicant, well, we put one in there, so, I'm just saying, and which then may go against the once future books of master plan, another thing. So I just wanted to put that out there. I mean, it's nothing against you or your family or solace, quality of life, it's just that
I completely understand, and I was saying to that, there has been precedent set for veterans with disabilities, in terms of them having front yard fence difficulties in staying in Jersey, despite the local ordinances. They work with the local municipalities to make sure that it's in form. There is precedent, so I feel like it would be fair to compare this situation with saying, well, how about the person next to you, how about the person next to you, when the person next to us has been serving seventeen years in the military, doesn't have three tours, doesn't have 100% disability, so if you feel like that, trying for the board to bring the exception for those type of exceptional people is not a heavy burden as there are between, I understand where you're coming from, but I feel like this is a doable, when you were, because it's not something that common, myself, as a civilian, I am not going to be able to see this with people of my sort, amongst military members that I meet who are scattered throughout the country, then I can see these exceptions being made.
And I appreciate your time, and I think because I posed my question to the other member's question, and your response to that is, again, more information for the board to consider. Thank you.
And I'm gonna, I'm not very familiar with the street, just so if anyone on the board is in, this is a really busy street when the kids get out of school. It's parked up on both sides. I have many times parked on this street, picking up my daughter from my school, throughout the years. And there's no sidewalks on this street. So the kids do run, of course, and people walk on the property as they have no other choice, they're not gonna walk the street. And I just am thinking that could possibly create distress for this person that lives there, because I know how busy this street is at 2:45 to probably 3:15, I'm tough. Can you hear me?
I can.
Did everybody hear me? Was everyone saying? So I just think maybe that's a consideration that everyone should know, that there's a lot of people, when people are parked on the street, they're walking on the properties to get in and out of the cars. People are loading their kids out, obviously not on the street, but the traffic side of the street. So it could possibly cause, I can see how that could cause distress to someone that is fearful of, you know, I don't know, I don't want to say the wrong thing, but that has, you know, is about people and what's going on.
There's no walking on that side of the street, and there's a sidewalk on the other side, so I don't believe people are gonna walk in the street, especially busy street.
Well, they don't walk on the street, that's my point, they're walking on the property back, walk up the side.
Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Pentino's question speaks to precedence for the board's decision-making process. Every application stands or falls on the individual barriers, the individual specifics of each application, and each application has to meet the burden of proof individually. And just because a property has a thing, addition, fence, third floor, does not mean that every property is entitled to that unless they meet the burden of proof and show you that there are specific conditions, and that specific property, that will allow you to consider that. And that's your decision, no one else's.
Okay. Any other...
So there's no parking, there's no parking on the side of the fence?
Parking on that side of the street.
So all the curbs are yellow on that side of it?
There's no parking, it's been that way for two years.
No parking on the outside?
Can we, yes, sir?
May I respond to?
Oh, you could respond.
So when you mentioned about the no parking, there's no parking on the corners, so my neighbor's house, 201, very low off, the other way across the street from us, I think it's 203, that's also yellow off, hard block, like the mayor mentioned, from 2:45 on, very much, very much parked, even though there's no parking. I used to see people all on the property, wait for their kids, waiting until maybe like twenty minutes, like license card got, they didn't deliver something to us. No, just waiting till their house was on, then the kid, don't you come in, go in. There's a lot of the gray grass, a lot of hunting, it's just, it's kind of a piastra that, but you're right, it's not supposed, there's not supposed to be cars there to that capacity. And there was a time my neighbor was trying to leave her driveway, and she was boxed in by everybody who was parked to kind of pick up their kids, and they're yelling at her, and she was saying, I'm trying to, just trying to leave. So it's a very busy area during the school year, which is nine to ten miles out here.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Chris?
We need to talk to the chief, I should be...
Okay. What I have to ask is, everybody, please just don't blurt out, because then we can't hear it, and we have this recorded. If you need to say something, let me address you, so we could open you up, okay? Chris?
You mentioned here, you would be okay with relocating the fence in the front yard, out of the right of it, based on the survey at seven feet, would you be?
Yes, when we saw the survey, first of all, it was, wow, they did this really poorly. So, yes, whatever it takes to be in place with architectural borders, I'm pretty sure.
What was that, Christian, seven feet?
Seven feet.
From the curb line?
No, from the right of way to where the edge of the fence is, is seven, about, approximately seven feet from the right of way, like towards the curb, so it's within the municipal right of right now.
Can you pull that up again? Yes, Mr. Kometic?
Backyard is, there's a chain fence on the left side, and you have a, like, it's actually a white fence in the back, and on the right side. So the side is, our ordering maker, people see it, it's up here.
Yes, definitely.
Very important, that's...
Yeah, it looks like shit. Really? That was blue.
Yeah, forget it.
You can pull that up for me? Let's just get that.
So we can see in the left side, which is a chain link fence, which goes all the way back, the back of the property, this fence, that's just the right side. So it's kind of, so it's just, the back and the right side is a front fence. The left side's completely just the same.
Chris, to your point, is it this, your piece, would come back seven feet?
Yes.
So these sections of fence are what, five feet, six feet?
Probably two meters.
Right? So that leaves you with a six, that leaves you with a six-foot space in the front of that house, if that section, do you have another angle?
It's got the survey.
Oh, go, yeah, go to that one. No, you gotta, I thought you had another angle. So there's three panels there.
So one panel to now is six.
Christian, the survey.
Oh, you have the survey. So if you got, go ahead, tell me what's left. Please tell us what's left from the front porch in that one space area.
If they bring it back, if they bring the fence to the right of way, it'll be 25 feet from the right of way.
To the front porch?
To the front porch.
How big that be?
Doesn't look like, it does not, I mean, that's why, it's a different, yeah, it's a deceptive angle. But right now, it's, right now, that's, it goes 32 feet towards the curb.
Okay. Is there any other questions so far? We can come back to it. Paul, what?
Are they on the right, on the right of way, or does it still have to be a certain amount of width?
On the third side. Third side of the right of way.
Yeah, third side.
Okay. So, okay, I'll answer the question, that's all.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chris.
I want to pay for this section of medical assessment or something.
Mr. Gregor?
I was gonna, I was gonna get it. You, your last several questions were hitting the point that I want to hit. I have to draft a resolution, it's said and done. And I want to make sure this is distinguished from anyone else who comes in and says, I don't want people walking in front of my house. Okay. Your letter from, or your wife's letter from the VA talked about totally and permanently disabled, thank you, do solely to your service connected disabilities. The letter from the vet, from the vet center, said that your wife's experiencing significant psychological distress due to a front yard fence dispute with her local town. Can you link those up for me so I can, because someone reading that can say, well, she has military issues. What's with the fence? And I get it, you know, but I need to put a little bit more meat on this bone. From your wife's military experience, if she's sitting in the front of the house, where does the stress and fear come in? If the mailman walking up the front steps or?
I would say it's more so the lack of control, right? So it's, and there's no fence, it just have wide open spaces. Anyone can come in and?
And that was, was she experiencing that in the military? Is that why she?
I can't figure specifically since she's been overseas. She's been in combat overseas a few times, so I can only imagine what she's had to deal with. I don't know, lobbies or classifieds.
But it makes her feel?
She used to know, because I work under surveillance, so she used to know what is happening around her and when. So the fence helps her by pretty much funneling and everything to one location. Like I mentioned, one of the restaurants, I started in her, she always making sure she sat where she could see the entrance and have a wide view of her.
Could she, could she come here if she had to, or no?
She could by now because we have a level of, a level of.
Okay, let's assume there was a babysitter. Would she be comfortable coming here and telling us what yours tell?
I think that she would, but that's one reason why there was that letter from the therapist. This is the level, the therapist might have this process to make her even more stressed. It's not that the fence isn't needed just because of that. My letter just said that during the last nine months, just the fact that she knows that someone in the town decided to call about this fence because they're a little raised, you don't understand why, you know, would feel like they have to get into someone else's life. I mean, she's very unhappy that so much of her personal life has to come out for this. So, for the sake of having to have the burden of proof.
But you can say she's definitely improved. She's, she's better with the fence.
Okay, I think I'm going to step in. We've got the whole correlation. We understand what's going on. We could come back to the board members after we open this up to the public. Does anyone have anything to say right now?
I just have a quick question for Chris.
Go ahead.
Just asking, and maybe it's just a title. Your letter is referencing a survey, survey by?
There are two surveys. One of them, I believe, is the original application, and then there's the more revised one that shows the actual.
Okay, that's not from the, that's why there's a discrepancy. Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make sure we're talking out.
Are you, Ms. Harrison, pretty much done with your testimony for now? Okay. All right. What we're going to do is we're going to have to open this up to the public, and then we could come back and make some questions and decisions.
Motion to open the hearing to the public?
Motion made by Mr. David, second by Mayor Karlovich. All in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? See and none?
Make a motion to close the hearing to the public?
Closed by Mr. David, second by Mayor Karlovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Here's what's in front of us. We have a builder that decided to tell this guy, this gentleman, I'm sorry, tell this gentleman that it's okay to put a fence wherever he wants. And we know that that builder knew better to do what he had to do. We also have letters here that's telling us that there's a necessity that his wife needs this and all her service and her disabilities. But we also have ordinances that we need to abide by. So what's in front of you is you have to make a decision, we have to make a decision, whether we abide by the ordinance and/or make some type of sacrifice here. So it's open for discussion. I can't make this decision. I have to hear from you folks.
I guess the decision, the decision that we're up against, we've had in the past similar applications, whether it's fence, or I remember a deck not too long ago where it was the, I didn't know. And I guess what we're being asked here is saying, I didn't know, but asking us to take into consideration the fact that there is a hardship. Basically, that's, you know, is this hardship enough for us to bypass our, you know, our current ordinance? So I have a tough time voting against someone who served, but at the same time, I'm still, I still have an issue with precedent. I understand the idea of precedent, just what's going to prevent the next person from coming here and say, oh, I didn't know I needed to know. So, yeah, it's not easy to say.
So just, this is our session, and we'll give you an opportunity, okay? Anyone else?
So you might have these issues before you bought the house, right? So you knew a binding across the school side. I understand the need for the fence. I'm just trying to figure this out myself. And you said you had a dog also, that in the front yard also? Okay, because I grew up in an area where everybody had their fences right on the property line. I was walking all through school, these big shepherds and stuff, I was scared walking up. And I know we have a lot of kids that I just, I also do that for a living. I handle blossoms for that. So I'm just a little nervous about the kids walking by me. It's a very, it's husky, and my husky's there, so, I know. But everybody says their dog is nice. But thank you, okay.
Anyone else? Okay. So there's two things. It's either approve or deny, or talk about the fence being on the property line or the right of way, behind the right of way. Gentlemen, I can't do this myself, so we have to have somebody speak up and tell me.
That the fence obviously has to comply with being right, sort of the right of way, it should not be on their own property.
The problem here, Mayor, is that it doesn't comply to the ordinance, even if we put it back to the property line. So that's our.
That's the hardship, that's what we're going to vote on, right?
Uh huh. And that's, that's the hard part, because it's, it's asking for forgiveness with, I don't believe Mr. Harrison knew what was going on, but I do believe that contractor knew exactly what he was doing.
Looking at it from the best plans standpoint, we've had, this board has had discussions in reference to this subject for years. I asked the one question in reference to if the fence provided any type of inhibiting public to the access to the stairs, to the house, to the resident. And the answer was that the fence, you could walk up the driveway, walk on the sidewalk, walk right up the steps, if not inhibiting the public of entering their personal spaces. I think if there was an accommodation to be made, maybe we bring it back to the bottom, you know, some space in front of the bottom of the stairs that's gated in so that they can contain themselves, and I might not be using the right words, but they would envelop their space and have controlled access, which I'm assuming would be the requirements of this disability. But that could be just in front of the stair, let's say five feet in front of the porch, so that they can walk down the porch, walk onto it. From driving by, it appears that you could walk from that front yard into the backyard without, you know, in the fenced area, you could go into the backyard. I don't think there, there's not a fence dividing the front.
There's just, there's a bar.
Yeah, so they could be contained within their personal space. And we're not doctors. I'm trying to understand what this is, but if that's somewhat of what it is, that if it gets pulled back to five feet in front of the porch and it is contained and by a gate that is now enclosing her area, so it's giving her the sense of security, yet it's not a fence all the way, all the way out. It offers them a burden, it offers the fence to meet their particular hardship in this case because of this case and not having a fence all the way out to the property line, all the way out to the property line.
I got you. Anyone else? Mr. Pantina?
Again, Mr. O'Brien, or Mr. Gregor, I said my piece on my feelings about this, and I agree with Mr. Mazzio, it's a very hard decision, hardship. So I asked this, if the board considers moving the fence back to the front of the right of way, as Mr. Hall presented, move it back a little further, I don't know, to the applicant. Your comment was, well, you really can't comply, this is a fence in the front yard, so it's a mitigation factor, but I, I don't know, I have to state this. I guess, first, our property owners, it can work for however long, forever, yeah, I'll say forever, but since it is a personal hardship, can you put language in there, or is it per, just out of control, can you put language in a decision that says that should the applicant, I don't know, side of the door or something like that, that fence has to come out? Because it's a personal hardship and not a property hardship. When you give out a personal hardship, it goes with the property and it's there for, until the house comes down.
That's a good point.
I have been, we're all talking about granting a bare front yard fence variance. It's just a question of where. But I have been involved in some medical situations with some boards where that kind of, you know, when the house, when it's no longer necessary for the reasons, then it comes out. But if they sell it, in this case, the fence would come out if they, if they move.
Yeah.
It's, it's doable. I mean, it's, you know, I've seen it happen with converting garages to bedrooms because of a medical issue, and when it's no longer needed, it's back to a garage.
And Gregor, you've got medical testimony that you could support that discussion?
That's why I wanted a little bit more flesh. It seems to me that it's clearly a medical problem, disability here, and if the testimony is that a fence helps her, that's, I think that's more, to agree with me, and Kevin, that's certainly a little positive.
That's something we definitely could do. But I'm going to throw one more, one more thing into the mix. We're here right now listening to really the hardship side of this. As much as I don't like that fence where it is right now, and I'm going to be very clear, I don't like where it is because of our ordinance, and it's there for a reason. But with this particular case, something needs to be done. I also don't agree with having it five feet off the porch, because I think that is going to be even more confining, and that may create another whole issue, even from a line of sight. It kind of looks like it's corralled now. It may be more like a, whatever that may be. I would propose going 10 feet off that front porch, having that fence there. That would give your wife and your family more space, and she won't feel so confined in that space. It'll be set back. You won't see it from the street as much, and that's the way I think I would like to see it.
I think if you look at the picture, I said five feet from the steps, you're saying 10 feet from the porch, we're actually saying.
Same thing.
And if you look at the picture, the natural construction of what we have right now, where the concrete ends after the stairs.
Give him five feet in front of that staircase, and he's got it.
He hasn't been in the fence right now. So if you take that piece of fence, run it south towards his right-hand neighbor, it's having, we're local setting from different directions.
All right. Yes, Chris?
Just to clarify what everyone's saying, presently, there's a 25-foot setback from the porch to the right of way. The stairs and the, and the landing is about 10 feet. So you're doing, from the porch, there's, there's steps and a landing, which is 10 feet from the porch. So right?
They're within the front yard setback.
Within the front yard setback. So I think that's. So if you're saying, if you're saying another five feet after that, you would have the fence 15 feet from the porch.
Or if you go to the front yard setback at 25, took you?
I was saying from the end of the landing.
From the landing. From, what was that?
Edge of the landing. So does that make a step, fence, to have a fence right next to the half?
No, it's five feet in front of it. I thought that's what you were saying.
I think it should be 10 feet.
Okay.
It's too tight. It's a little weird.
So maybe I'm not understanding. Thank you.
25 feet there now.
Okay.
And there's seven feet beyond it.
Okay. I say 10 feet. It would be my suggestion, 10 feet in front of the staircase.
To the landing, the landing there?
Makes sense. It gives it a little bit more room.
It would be the landing.
Kevin? Question? Aesthetically?
I mean, engineering-wise, there's, I don't really have any confidence. It's just nice.
Whether it's 10 feet out or the 25 feet out from the right of way, that's up to you. It probably makes logical sense, not make sense, to bring it to the front, but if you don't think that looks good, that's.
What do you bring, so where it's right, where it is right now, aesthetically, that doesn't look good to me at all.
No, it does not.
Right? So I want to bring it back, but at the same time, I don't want to make it like an incarceration cell, right? So what would be the appropriate amount of space that, if we're going to do something like this, let's, let's do something that works, not something.
Any other fence is allowed to go to the front yard setback if allowed?
Right.
So should you decide this is allowed, you may want to say, okay, then this should meet what all the other fences do, which is go to the front yard setback. Or the board may decide to bring it back. It's up to you.
Mr. David, no comment?
No, I mean, I personally, I think this case needs to be moved along. We have another big case to hear, and we're probably going to be here rather late as a result. But having heard all the different discussions around where it should be, in my mind, we should get some kind of survey as to what it would look like, but I mean more aesthetic, where what it would look like 10 feet, what it would look like from five feet, you know, the different possibilities. The fence is up, it's not coming down until this board votes, or stays up until this board votes. So I don't see an urgency to try and hash this out to satisfy everyone here tonight, this very moment. So that's, that's my.
Who's going to make that draw? Who's going to make that, who's going to make, I mean, I think the board has got to make that decision, Mr. David. You know, what are we going are we going to see? I think what we're trying to do is, I think Mr. Harrison is trying to be cooperative and saying, I'll move it back. You tell me where I could move it back, I could also get what I need for my wife. And to make them go back to the drawing board, maybe we could do it now, just
Yeah, I'm just giving you my opinion. You asked for it and it's up to the board on one vote, but we could possibly get Christian to go out there and give us two, you know, schematics of where, how it might look, you know. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I just want to make the point that the board
Needs to move on.
Yeah, to try to move this along.
Mr. Grimaldi, you're an architect. Give me some visual real quick.
Would you like me to make, would you like Mr. to
I have one up here, so
I just drew a line of one. Would you like me to make a motion?
Yeah, make the motion on the setback where you'd like it to go, and I think we need to move this on. And
Could I show the applicant what I was going to say? Did you grab the phone?
I, I think, I think, yeah, if you want to go all through that.
Based upon, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Based upon the applicant's exhibit of, I guess this is
Does it do?
The existing survey.
Yes, we're going to do that.
Basically, as what we kind of discussed, I drew a straight line from where his existing fence is at the end of his landing, after the stairs, at the end of his landing, where it goes from south to north and ends at the corner of his driveway. Take that line back to the southern point of his property.
Okay.
Which will give him an area of protective area in front of his house, which is approximately 10 feet from the porch right now. And I would make a motion to approve this with the language that Lou is
From the landing or from the, yeah, from the porch?
Bottom of the landing, from
The steps come down.
The bottom of the steps.
The landing, at the end of the landing, where the fence is right now.
Edge of land, okay, okay.
And just extend that portion to the, towards the school. And again, obviously, with all the caveat
I'm going to want that because if the board agrees on that and votes for it, I may want to attach it to the resolution.
This is where you're
It's 20 feet from the front yard.
Yes, that's what it should be, yes.
20 feet from the front yard. Okay, it's very simple. It's 20 feet from the front yard.
20 feet from the front yard.
So you just made a motion that you would, your motion is that we will entertain 20 feet from the front yard setback with a condition stating that this is only for the purpose of while you own the house and it's non-transferable to the next owner, the fence needs to come down and adhere to all the President's codes. Okay?
Yes, we can do this with a medical situation. I've seen it done and nobody complains about it because it helps everybody.
You can, yes.
Unless I'm not understanding. You would have one, would you turn a few, here to there, and then from here to there.
Christian?
Well, I think it's too small. I think that's funny. Well, you mentioned this.
So you were saying that line was drawn in the front of the landing, needs to move out towards the street.
I think that's too small.
Yeah, you're doing that right across the landing?
Where are the, where are the
So you're doing it right there, but this is where the existing is now, right?
But there's a piece of fence right now, because it comes this way, that way now. So just take it that way instead.
Yeah. This is where it is right now, correct?
It is right now and then
This is what you're proposing?
That's the
That's that.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm saying this, I'm saying take that across.
Now, I'd like to see something eventually.
He's saving, he's saving 10 feet from the, from the front yard setback, from the, from the porch, at the bottom of the steps.
Yes.
It's like a hung fence. We have a lot of those pieces of grass.
Correct, yeah.
It's just out there. So there's like three quarters of the front lawn, which is the grass.
Just let me do this real quick. This is the front, right, where it is now. This is what Grimaldi is saying.
The front yard setback.
This is very tight here.
That's 10 feet.
Where are you saying, what?
Well, landing.
If the porch is 25 right now.
Right, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Right, go to the right way. Just go to the right way. Just go to the right way.
Go to the right way.
Go to the right way, because it's like being in here.
5 feet from the porch. That's what was my vote. We don't have to hold on that, so let me take another one.
Okay. I can't make the motion.
Anybody?
Would you, would you consider adjusting your motion? Should it right?
I'd rather not.
You'd rather not? Okay. Okay, there's a motion on the floor and we have to hear that motion. Does, the motion is to the bottom of the landing. Does anyone second that motion? Okay, seeing none.
That motion dies?
That motion dies. Is there anyone want to make another motion?
I'd say motion 25 feet from the porch.
25 feet from the porch, which would be the right of way?
Or to front of the property line.
From property line.
25 feet from the property line. The motion is 25 feet from the property line with the condition that we stated forward, that it carries only to this property, this property owner. And if it is sold, the fence comes down. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Poglisi. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Pasarna?
Yes.
Mayor Pravovic?
Yes.
Mr. Skiris?
On her motion?
Yeah.
She's 25 feet?
25 feet. We pushed it back a little bit.
From the
Yes, for Mr. Skiris.
Mr. David?
No.
Mr. Clemente?
No.
Mr. Pantina?
No.
Mr. Mazio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladouti?
No.
Mr. Kala?
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi?
No. Only called nine, nine members, that's all we can remember. Nine, six, non-regular members, I think we went to 10.
You went to 10 there.
I went to 10. All right, Mr. Grimaldi's doesn't count then.
Okay.
So what, I had four four and then two people were called.
Five. Five yes.
You have five yes, five no.
No.
But
Yeah, only nine can vote.
Somebody can't vote.
I'm the alternate, you got to take me out.
I did.
Take you out?
I took you out.
Mr. Kala is alternate number one.
Okay.
Sorry.
So you got one, two, three, four, five yays, four nays.
Is that right, Ken?
Yep.
Am I correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Good luck, my friend. You know what to do. They'll set, who's going to set something up for him or does he, what does he do at this point?
Call the contract. The resolution will be written up for our next, for the September meeting, which all the conditions will be laid out. One of us, Drago or Mr. Rashida, will make sure you get a copy of that. If you have an opportunity to come back to us, if you have any discussion of those conditions.
Five-minute recess.
We'll be
We'll get a five-minute recess. Yeah, I got to hit the
We'll be
You're welcome. Want to make a motion for a five-minute recess?
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah, we're done with him.
I make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Seven.
All in favor? Five minutes in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have now, application 24006 North Holding. Mr. Hale?
Yes.
We had a quick conference. We're going to try to hold this to an hour if we could, if we could move it along.
Certainly, certainly.
Or less?
I'd like to, again, thank you for your profession. We're here to discuss about the antas location, present the testimony, my client is not available, they are here this evening, we present the testimony for site engineer last meeting, various, some of those areas have changed, this is a possibility to use in the town. And again, what we'll do for the first part of the project is essentially clear on site, add some side to the foot side of the building, additional paid doors. We'll have brief testimony explaining why these additional paid doors. And just a question, snapshot, we get, used to be a large factory and with that, you have only a few large delivery orders and then back the door coming on and what happened now is warehouse distribution within, tenants that are there, there's more frequent of smaller, GPS, boxcars, we will outline what those various tenants do with the location. And then I am going to take, give them just the changes that we've made, like we've had since our last meeting here, several TRCs and really appreciate Kevin Brechen sitting down with us on several occasions and told us all their comments involved, given us several memorandums and then believe we addressed all of those issues. I do also want to story out the same, I found out that, you know, that there are fire violations and public park violations and the board was kind enough to send those in today. I'm going to have my clients just come up briefly, plumber was here this evening, I'm also told to go explain that the airport is in use, they're bringing up, they're going to get it up, and fire violations, if you work with the fire department, address those. So what I'd like to do is, because I know that's a concern for it, let me just have them briefly come up with a piece of warrant and just address, address that issue.
Guys. Gentlemen, again, we don't have good microphones tonight. You really got to project and this way we could hear you. I just about heard Mr. Hale, but I wasn't going to yell out.
Who, who will speak, who will be speaking?
I think Paul, wait a second. We swore, say your name.
Well, you first. You could just fake nature, it's by your last name.
First name, Sloane, last name is Royer, first name S-H-L-O-N-E, last
S-S-H
S-H
L-O-N-E, last name is Royer, U-R-E, U-E-R. Okay.
Sloan, is that what you said?
With regard to this, you want me to, you want to affirm, not a swear, correct, that me online. With regard to this application, do you affirm that testimony you give showing the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we do Okay, if you could raise your right hand, same thing, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give showing the truth? Okay, and are you voting tenants, owners, applicants, what's your affiliation?
I'm a partner in property, I'm a property manager.
Okay. Okay.
So they're both affiliated with the property.
Got it, okay.
And again, we'll get to the specifics of the application. And they were at several of the TRC meetings that we had, with support professionals and company back, that were here, dress that, also put together again, operations as well, and so two issues, or two sets of issues, if you prefer, same line of instruction there, with the working department, touch on those violations and piracy, several things that they were on that. So yeah, and so we have an inspection, I think, two weeks ago, we have daily inspection, and we had several violations in the building, that we did some construction, totally aware. So some issues like that, or next life, or next life report, we had the file on, like had a lot of signal, we had one of the last defined a dead ball, we had extension ports, very flexible reports for the, for the ladder report and sprint reports. I provided, there was a whole, there was a second floor that was still unreported. I provided ready for the file, official, all the reports. The system I sent in, the report system showed normal, if you apply that, not the second floor, the wall is done, exit lights were fixed, most of the stuff, everything, basically pretty much done. We tried to finish the facility, next life, remove the extension ports, try to like finish it up, so just find stuff to finish up, pretty much done. We asked for to organize the place, it was construction, being built in space, so there was a lot of boxes filed off, but there was not enough, you were like aisles, and have workers there applying and organizing the space, making sure that there is enough aisles according to what it was asking for, and pretty much all was done, and hopefully sometime next week we go to inspection and we show that everything applied.
Okay. Yeah, certainly, again.
I have some questions. I just want to let the board know that the inspection was done on May 27th, so it was not two weeks ago. In your list of items that you said that you addressed, there's a second floor closet door that if you open it, it falls down to the, on the second floor to the first floor. I'm not just concerned about the people there that are working there, but our firefighters and first responders, if they have come into the building. And also, I actually have
You have a question there, ma'am?
Oh, I want to know if that's being addressed, what the status is of that.
This was in the paper.
This is, this is violation number five on the list.
On the rule, right?
On the closet door.
This one, right?
So it's being
We're not going to see.
So when is, what is the status of that?
It's stopped.
It is stopped.
So keep in mind, we bought a property about eight months ago, we bought it and have a property with this technical, we know there was a lot of, the tenant, the tenant was there, there was a lot of tenants, so it's based, so where are you, if they show the tenants?
The board members here? Gentlemen, we really have to ask you to speak up. Okay, it's very hard.
I spoke to my fire chief at 3:50 PM today and I, he said that he's made several calls to you to set up an inspection and has not received a call back.
I replied, he's asking me today, five minutes ago.
Maybe it was after that I spoke to him.
Yeah.
I spoke to him at 10 to 4.
So let's, let's cut to the chase. We have fire violations and we have health department violations. Should this board decide at the end of the night that we would approve, should we decide that we would approve this application, it would be subject to a condition that all these violations will be met and satisfied to the building department and the health department and the fire code official. You will not be able to get a certificate of occupancy, you will not be able to do anything unless this criteria is met prior to construction of anything. This has to be met first.
There's no problem with that. Please make sure that you have the appropriate people have your cell numbers, they can touch it. I do know, there are several that have dated, 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 so obviously some things have gone, there's no excuse for fire safety items, not to be addressed, no problem to make this condition. Again, please make sure that appropriate fire, the health department
There's human beings in that building right now. There's human beings in that building right now.
Yes.
Mr. Grimaldi had a quick question. Do you mind, Stephen?
Sure.
Did they just testify that there was construction being done without permit?
I don't, I didn't, I couldn't hear them, so you have a better grab on it. Is that what you're saying? Was there construction being done without permits?
Yeah.
You have permits? Okay. So in other words, when the official came in, he noticed these other things going on, these violations. Okay. I'm sorry?
There was a complaint.
There was a complaint?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So if we got this
I have a question. Do you want to talk these violations either? I don't know if you said
I don't know if you sent them, something got them-
We just got them today from Carmen. Today we got, we have an online here. We got the complaints from Carmen today, the violation list of all the violations today.
I listened.
Okay. I have a question, I just would like to have the information, and so they know what came in today, so it's not, it's not.
So I think the applicant has stated that if this application was approved, he would abide by taking care of all the violations, fire and health. However, the application shouldn't be the reason that you're doing it. It should just be done, and it should be done immediately because it's a fire safety hazard. And no water, no hot water, no flushing toilets, no lights, doors collapsing, whatever that is, it just needs to be, well, this is the report I have in front of me. So all I'm saying is, you have to meet the criteria and then we can move forward.
I would also invite Mayor to have the fire officials or health department officials to contact my office.
Let your numbers-
So Mayor, I have, I have a call to make, making sure that-
Okay, is everyone satisfied with what we just stated, as far as that's concerned?
Yes.
All right, good. Let's get on to the case.
So I just wanted to touch on what we're, I know we're due, and I know this is a minority this year, and the revisions warrant, the revisions that were made to the plans since we started, since our first hearing and working with Kevin Christian on that. And Jim had put together a letter, or a series of three different letters outlining the revisions to the plans. I thought, I think they, they may have been submitted as submissions over time, and just want to touch on them, and to deflect responses to their reports. So, and some of them are, we'll get into technical, but there's a May 20th letter and just said there was a detail on sheet five, sheet three, now showing the entire building, that was on, personally, headroom requested. South side, didn't shine, sign, two additional followers, and a no right turn sign, storage of right turns, white trucks coming out, as well as any trucks heading in. We had a site meeting, and it was concerned, we don't want the trucks coming down, twelve, but coming into our site, whatever we do to make it much more difficult for them when they're leaving, make a right out, or coming down, make a left in. Landscaping cables that had been added, some sheets, additional landscaping, this proposal is part of this, and this is the model in the last area that we're pressing addition offering, paper screen, turning radius for trucks we added for the plan, I think that was something coming, both sort of times, radar, details, weight press curve, and pavement sections, again, focusing on that, that left turn, obviously, right turn in, left turn out, and the engine zero. The northwest area of Roach A has the detail showing the depth, frame, wall lights haven't changed, the house whole color, it was inserted, but the wall lights shining out. Additional armor bodies were added along the sound line of the property, and two lights over pictures, also to ensure there's no lighting spill over. And the, just some other technical comments, that was the May 20 revision, we have the report TRCs on June 6th. It's again, just more technical, existing visual signs on east side of 12th Street were added, they're there, but were added, shown, requested PSC, G shield, hall lights, we don't own those hall lights, PSC and G does, we basically requested PSC, G shield though. The removal of additional areas, that was just again, tenant, and then tenant identification, existing plans, and comments on the loading bay, and also details, as a part of it, there was a location of the trash enclosure that's up in the corner that's parking on, and it's also closed with the, Kevin, I believe it's a concrete wall, so it's again shielded, even though we're changing to the paper street, our residence is beyond that, we want to add additional buffering, and we have also no problem with private hauler having reasonable hours on garbage pickup and delivery. So that goes with the changes that we made, and address comments from the board, Mr. O'Brien is here, but I wanted to touch on with the changes, or at least a blackboard effort, but I think, like, a couple of board members, I guess, makes a big point, we need to, in this project, of each TRC we have, so. Nice question.
Go ahead, I'll get it, Evan, it's you.
Either Mr. Hale or Christian. I was here at the first meeting, the first hearing on this, and we were all agreement about the no right turn, no left turn in, so the driveway was trying to see that you responded to. So this question is really toward Christian, as the tenant chairs whether he's comfortable with this, or whether you're changing. So, and I saw on Mr. O'Brien's, there were certain things that weren't provided that didn't match. So sheet three, which is supposed to be the proposed improvement, sheet five, don't drive through this, we're detail on five, but it doesn't even say on sheet three that it's sheet five in detail. So sheet three doesn't show the followers, doesn't show the signs, I don't know what else it doesn't show, but I mean, it's just not consistent.
Well, you have to give that question. As long as-
From an enforcement-
Right. In terms of, he showed exactly what we were asking for, in terms of on sheet five.
On sheet five.
On sheet five. And I would recommend that the rest of the sheets be modified to be on the system.
Right. So like, on sheet three, I mean, the track that you put in, again, the track that you put in the reading this hearing, what I call reading this hearing, in the driveway, in the right way, and you got sidle up there, you got to have a hand in it. Now, on sheet five, you just said press curve, but you got to have, again, the check, we have, you know, you have to have a hand up there. And also, and this is just my personal comment, again, for Christian, if you're back on, do we, do we want that no right turn sign in the right way, or do we want it on the property? Behind the right-
During the last several work TRCs meetings, we wanted, we wanted one sign on the property so that the driver would see not to make a right turn.
Okay. Just a question.
There's also across the street insisting no right turn.
That's not on here, is it?
That's not, that's not shown.
That's not shown on three or five, so you don't know.
It's not one of them. It's on a sheet, they all happen to be registered style. And that's our confidence, you'll be allowed.
Right, I saw that.
So, but we, we want a no right turn sign on the property as well as right adjacent on, that would be existing, that already comes inside.
Okay. My comment. And I think, Mr. O'Brien, the borough was also into additional sign, signage on the board, well, frankly, I might go down here, it seems very clear that no trucks are allowed, that's an issue that's looked at, trying to discourage that. And Joel will touch on that they're also instructing drivers not to take that turn, and also including at least in their tenants, that, that, that restriction.
As part of our TRC meetings, Chair, one of the recommendations from all of us was that should the board wish to consider this application, that perhaps part of a resolution would be to communicate with Borough Council, Borough Council, Mayor, to suggest, encourage additional no truck signage on 12th Street and the middle road. That's a policy decision for the board.
Is that a truck route?
No.
It's not?
No trucks are allowed.
And it's pretty, it's pretty clear, review. Absolutely. You see it? So another factor that, right, just from what's here, but I, I thought, because our clients weren't here at the last meeting, just called in about what the tenants' application are, hours of operation, and expected, expected truck activity from that site. So, gentlemen, I just want to just touch on that, three tenants that are at the location.
So I speak out. So right now, right now at the property, we have probably 92,000 square feet on ground four. There is about 87,000 square feet, I would say, the main building, there's a 5,000 square feet, like a side building, like, building in like an L shape, so it's like, the side is a small 5,000 square foot building. On the main building, 87,000 square feet, implies probably two, two or three towns in there. Right now, I myself, I'm a business owner, I know businesses go home for you. What we do is, we import products from overseas, and we sell them online. Every single day, we get, we sell them on Walmart, Target, Amazon, Wayfair, like Home and Wal, et cetera, a lot of different channels online. Somebody goes online and orders something, electronic, we want to get it ready to power forward from our system, and we can fill the products from our warehouse directly to the consumer. So we get a daily pickup from UPS, FedEx, USPS, DHL, from the main, all the main carriers to pick up. Besides the pickups, we can get every single day. Right now, what is, this is eventually, we start getting, we get pickups. Besides the pickups, we get every day, we probably get one, both likely, most of the time, one container sometimes, two containers per day, they discover, they drop by the loading dock, takes about three to five, sometimes a day alone, plus we can get one or two trucks. Usually it's one truck will pick up, or delivering, 20 pallets, 10 pallets. So just first talking about my own business, we find we need so many docks, trying to add so many docks, because all the carriers, they all come to pick up, I mean, four, five days, this short window, because we try to, from customer order, three days, four or five. We should leave to the customer the same day, so everybody comes in the same short period. So what we do is, we, you know, put the boxes in front of the loading dock, and when the media control every day, we give the quarters off in 20 minutes. Interesting term for second, we mention product, just generally what type of product you're on, what you- So no, so we talk about basically, we sell our furniture.
Gentlemen, please, let's talk off the air.
So our furniture, medical furniture, like shower chairs, game, bedrooms, we have a line of exercise products, like, of gym equipment, or maybe for the streams, right, they have power towers, something else, stuff.
Fan a hole?
No, not like a hole. So it's basically, so we have two different categories that we sell a lot, but probably this is similar, nothing, nothing-
Home for you?
Home for you? Yes.
S O R?
H O R E, our four letter U.
The name is one of them. What does that letter give?
Yes. I think it's just, it's like, yeah, there's, and then we're general hours of operation.
So we operate usually in normal hours, between 8:30 and 8:40. Four days a week, Friday we do one or two, not a lot, usually no. So obviously, we do one or two weeks, like Fridays, so I guess it's a change of week.
And you explained the number, or she touched on-
So I plan, so from our company, we're going to have like four, four or five carriers, major carrier, go shop every single day, one or two containers, drop off a day, sometimes they rotate, they make a new one, make an old one, and one trailer usually after they deliver and make out. This is what our company, then we have two more tenants right now, building, one tenant, the existing tenant, but we bought a property still there, named Nantol Logistics, I believe is company name. They operate around three, three of the old trucks, two vans, there are public storage, public warehouse for customers in Indian River City, it's a mall also. So they're getting deliveries every day from the two trucks, and they are doing outlands, which is, they're both of them are the old trucks.
That client was there prior to you buying this?
Yes. It's still there, I can give you more storage, that's one of them. So prior to you bought the property, they were, I have the property, 10, 12 minutes in here. So right now, there is like, we occupy, probably, say, 40% of the property, there is 20% of the property, which is rental logistics, then there's also one small tenant, sports night base area, he was supposed to over there, he gives me 20 in his own-
Weekend, just again, hours of operation of-
Normal hours, so it's eight to five, five a week.
No weekends?
No weekends.
And then the Sky Basin, again, that was another company.
So Sky Basin, another company, we just, private property, we also have the whole operation from 9:00 to 5:00, Friday of the week, Monday to Friday. They have their own fleet of three vans, and two pickup trucks, they usually go for the jobs, I believe they do machinery stuff, kind of stuff.
And this property is, is stored, they're-
Correct. It's stored there, but we're leaving the property. And then there is like, right now, a section of the property which is still vacant.
Okay. So that was, again, unfortunately, Sam and Joel weren't here, it was more right here, so we put, wanted to make sure they came and explained hours of operation and why the official pay doors, which is the native of this application, side of pitch lane, landscaping, cleaning up the side of the building, that is an exhibit submitted with the side, I think the board has it, this request to see, see what the side, what they look like.
The name's South Side. The color rendering with the South Side.
If I may say, the, you know, we bought the property, the building, it like, built probably nine, some of the section was 1920 to 1940. So we started doing the construction inside, with the permits, like the list, there's a lot of various walls, there are also, we try and, we operate the building, so we have the, 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 the mining, so hoping to build it up. The one of the biggest, we have a loading dock, we're not going to have too much traffic, we don't have just for furniture loading. These reports are not practical, the building divided into three or four sections, everybody needs to get their two or three dedicated loading docks, and also provided, so if they're getting a container truck, there's a lot of one or two loading docks access to their operation, no trucks staying outside, no swans, which is waiting to come in. Prior, I bought the property, my previous owner told me that we only had four loading docks, three trams, and it had times, like, the four loading docks were occupied, but they take the two containers, one to truck there, to have traffic, like, to afford to travel, trailers sick, outside and all trucks waiting, and loading dock, they should give it back to the property. I believe with the new pay doors we're opening up, it's not going to be necessary anymore, some traders waiting outside, I believe this, this number's been a bit like they have.
Going back to you, hours of operation. All three businesses right now are not occupying the building, or not working on the weekends, correct?
Correct.
And you have future plans to grow your business? Is that going to be the motif for the future business?
Correct.
So-
Which could be like, the holiday season, like, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
That's understandable, but we're looking at a Monday through Friday operation. Chris, did you have something?
Yes, just wanted to confirm, right now there are like five spaces, like five tent spaces, so two of them are occupied by local units, my company. Yes, just wanted to, um, confirm, uh, right now, there are like five spaces, like five tent spaces, so two of them are occupied by, uh, hopefully, Mike, yeah, and then the other ones are handled, which I say, it's kind of these, like, one, right, if you do, if you said, you're doing two, I would probably occupy two of them, and one of them is gonna be a trade, um, trade, um, trade, um, what I feel loading dock is, you, you would expect that to be.
It's gonna be probably the same nature of, we have, so we made, we made the building, um, not, not manufacturing of it anymore, so, uh, going to the very obvious, okay.
More, more warehouse.
It's warehouse style, where the, probably, if they made true commerce thought, I mean, very slow, great quiet operation.
Mr. Chairman, here's the rendering, the board has a poppy as well, I think, through.
You might want to, uh, if you, if you have, if we have enough right here with these two gentlemen, we might want to hear Mr. Messer Nati, and then come back to this. It's starting to, you're starting to encroach.
With regard to, to the, to the, uh, South Side of the base, approximation, or if the board approves it, that's whatever, of colors, texture, I mean, is it gonna look like this? When you fix it?
Yeah. During one of our meetings, you mentioned that loading zone is to the east, and to where you're disposed of the dumpster area, um, you always, you know, how that loading, that loading bay, uh, doors. Yeah, we're at a, I think we're out there, we have all of us, uh, saying, that, that loading bay is, I, 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 it's, it's really a closure. It's not new days, a long system, like, I just want to see the day.
What's that, the whole board, the whole board?
It's just, uh, where the, for the capture, we're talking, this, this is, it sounds like a loading dock, technically, with, some, some loading dock, that's only two, three, four ways, um, maybe a lot of any, any kind of trucks, or there's, this is, we, we, this is the best area, the, the, uh, the, uh.
Usually a loading dock, if you have four feet, trucks will get to the back end, if they get to the high level, they'll open, right, forty, usually forty, fifty inches, it's about forty-four, fifty.
Just you pause right next to where, after this, pause two minutes, so we'll attach it to the.
Kai, do you have anything else for these gentlemen? No, anyone else, right now? Mr. Happ, yes?
Good.
Mr. Happ?
And these eight different provisions, one tax...
We'll say one.
Eight, two, three.
We'll say one.
Eight more.
Chairman, on June 17th, my plan report number two, on page three, item R Romeo to break bottom, might show one, two, three, four, five items that have not been addressed as a result of our technical review committee meetings that Mr. Quado and I suggested for very interesting sake, Mr. Hale, Mr. Mastinari, shows that they're provided. There is a site plan here if anyone wants to see it, full size.
Okay. We will submit those, but Kevin, you can leave.
Can I just interject?
Oh.
I know we see about seven site plans out there, I guess, with the markings of what we asked for. But if I remember correctly, I appreciate that they're there. I know we did not see them, but I know it went to you and you, correct?
No, we're bringing them in. This letter came in on June 11th. Plans were just done last Friday. So we didn't want to submit that because we bring them out and it just had testimony indicating that it addresses Kevin's problems.
Okay.
We have not seen that.
You have not seen it either, did you, Chris?
I saw it, well, today I saw it.
Okay, you saw it today. Okay.
So, just to touch on a few items in this room, right, that should be pointed out on every month. Is it June 11th?
Yeah.
Are you on page three here?
Well, that is my plan report, the 17th. We're also referring to a letter, the 11th summarized the technical review committee meeting. Either one is...
This is June 17th, but we want to see that. Kevin, the plaintiffs are submitted in our package, right, from May 19th. Those plaintiffs aren't even presented in your package. So you reviewed June 11th, June 6th, which also were in the package, including the June, whatever he said today, right?
We reviewed the last one, stated the 6th of June.
Right, so what's in the package, unless I don't know, is Rev. 3, is May 19th, 25.
It should have been provided 6th of June. And then Mr. Mastinari is now talking about provisions since then.
That would be great. The question is, can we get a report of something that we've absorbed and were technical in nature addressing those specific comments?
No, yeah, but I'm saying the ones that I referred to before were actually from 2000.
So they're...
Sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm not sorry, that's the thing.
I just want, Mr. Mastinari, you're still under oath from the March 13th meeting, I'm assuming all the 12 of you in terms of your licenses and all this.
Yes.
Good, okay.
So, just to touch on the items that are from the June 17th, that are raised by Mr. O'Brien. And do you want to...
Sure.
I like want to.
Absolutely. Show WD64 inbound to the property, sound balance, well, that is a size of truck. It's a big one. Mr. Mastinari, have you been able to do that?
Yes.
Excellent. Number two, ability design driveway drawing on each sheet.
Yes.
Number three, provide outside shielding for east lot over lighting.
I heard you go saying that we'll contact PSCG who owns the lights about providing shielding.
Provide average daily or weekly truck track.
Okay, so that is up to the orders because I can...
Have you provided, Mr. Mastinari?
That was testimony that...
That was testimony you just gave.
Right.
So we've done that. Confirm removal of any accessory dumpster areas?
Is there a note that affects that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, will I take Mr. Mastinari's word? That seems like the open.
Okay. If we can move on.
We need to specify the good...
And sure, certainly, we will warn out on this plan.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, again, I think the hard work of your board professionals, the hard work of your board professionals, the work of DFAC, really addressed from that first hearing, and all of the comments that thirds and fourth acts and comments of grades just can't get, I think, you know, total three TRCs on this project.
We, I mean, I must have made four revisions since the hearing back in March. Many revisions, TRCs, back and forth, we've ironed out, I believe, the iron out, everything.
Okay. So through the TRCs and the reports that we're hearing now, you adhere to all of Mr. O'Brien and Chris's needs.
Yes.
That's what you're saying. Yes, Chris?
I did amend into one of my comments about the EV spaces. According to state regulations, any new parking lot requires EV spaces. And the, I guess, the party has proposed on, was that lot C, technically a re-parking parking lot, that would require an EV space for that.
How many is that, Chris? One, two?
It's not new parking.
Is there parking there now?
Is that the north? Is that the north parking?
The north parking lot.
You have a property lot?
Yeah.
We're not proposing parking.
This is what, this is what, you're proposing...
Little more of your Mr. Quado, apply, provide whatever EV is required in that area, two spaces being added.
So I understand that Mr. Quado wants to amend his statements because this is something new that has come up with him, so...
I initially requested three, I believe, it's only one this year.
Okay.
Unless Mr. Hale can show that that was a prior parking lot.
Same amount.
Gravels, it's now bit grass, unless you can show historically was a parking lot which is, it's still...
And we'll, yes, we'll work with your board on that. So to your... Unless you have to show a big part of the surface and change, I'd be ready.
I have to ask a question, guys. Mr. Quado asked for three EV spots, right, originally. What he's saying is you don't need three, you only need one. So if three was requested, you'd have to reduce it by two. It's no big deal, right?
Yeah. I was just saying that we didn't need any because the state rule says if it's new parking, then you require an EV space. But if you want any...
Well, I don't want it, I just want to do what's right. For me, I use gas. But, you know, I...
Lot C on the north side of the building appears to be new according to the site plan. We suspect that it's a historic parking lot, it puts its gravel, so Mr. Hale can show us historically it was a parking lot.
We don't need it.
You don't need it. But if it's a new parking lot, Mr. Quado needs one EV.
Simple, Mr. Hale?
That's simple.
Mr. Gormaldi?
Just real quick for this piece, that used to be the extension of the railroads right there. There were railroad tracks alongside the building, so there could have been parking there previously through railroad tracks. And railroad tracks came out, it was crowded.
Okay. Somebody may have used it as parking, but it wasn't a legitimate parking area.
Right now...
You need one.
Okay, just...
You need one. How about that? Would you like to do that?
When I was saying when Mr. Zeus lied, I did show it as parking. When this told, not 10 years, and I did show parking at that time, and included in analysis.
Mr. Hale, wherever you go to the...
Well, we'll work with...
Don't stand...
I think you should be...
We're all...
I think you should move this along. Is that everything you have?
We have nothing more, certainly, we're certainly satisfied with what we're here. Excited to get this project going.
Chris, are you satisfied with everything?
And they said that they will provide all the comments about the E and Mr. O'Brien.
Okay. Hey, Kevin?
Sir?
Are you satisfied with everything that they have brought in front of us?
Yes.
Okay, so they have complied. And they're going to do everything that we talked about here tonight and in our previous meetings.
Plus whatever reasonable conditions the board wishes to propose in the resolution.
What did we talk about as far as conditions are concerned? Because we didn't talk about anything here tonight except that EV spot.
We talked about the violations being cured.
Oh, the violations, yes. I thought we handled that, but go ahead.
We talked about it's a board decision whether you want to include a request to the borough about additional on truck signage on Route 12.
Yes.
And then the EV or other... Discussion from...
I'm going to do this because after a week, we talk to them now.
Mayor, when you pull in that lot on Route 12, and you go all the way to the back, that corner is, the two buildings kind of where that elbow is, it's going to be in that area with a masonry wall on the side that faces the big laser.
Are you pretty much complete with your testimony, Mr. Hale? Or I mean, Mr. Mastinari?
I'd just like to end it at, someone mentioned that the sign on Route 12 Street was not on the place, but it's on the existing condition.
Well, I was writing on H3 and 5, but I've been looking on two raps ago, I don't know if you're trying to figure it out. Yeah, it is on the existing condition, and I probably should put it on that sheet probably , but...
Mr. Mastinari agreed that it's a resolution condition and he will match all the plans until they all show everything we're looking for.
Okay. Okay. You gentlemen finished?
We're done.
Zero motion openness to the public.
So...
Moved by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Clemente, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter and this matter only? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Closed by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Mazzio. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have everything in front of you. We have to, what we have is some conditions that we're going to ask Rue to recite in that, whatever that writing is over there. And we'll, yes, Mr. Gormaldi?
I'll try to be quick, I just want to ask you a couple of questions. Right now, the business is functioning as it is right now, correct?
Whatever business they're running right now, they're running out of there.
We don't have updated plans because they were very proactive by reacting to our professionals' comments and updating their drawings, which happened right now. They have outstanding violations with many departments in council.
Yeah.
And I understand when you inherit a old building in the industry, I understand inherent nightmares at times. Our officials are going to have to go in there, maybe they can give them some other recommendations. My suggestion would be let them come back to the board with the file set of drawings that we all can have, get all the open violations cleaned up, have an understanding from all departments that everything has been satisfied, and let us make our decision at the next meeting because it's not going to impact their business today because they're functioning as they are today. And then we could get, put a light bulb on it, we got a final set of drawings, we know that all the violations are cured, and all our leaders of our departments have been satisfied. And look, I'm glad they're here, I'm glad that somebody moved into the company, into the building, and it's functioning the way they are. But I think for the board, I think we'd all feel better that everything's done, there's a bulb on it, and we most likely vote positive.
Okay, so I could take that into consideration as your board chair, and of course, I don't make the final decisions, but you also have to look at a couple of things. We are two professionals who are satisfied with what Mr. Hale has presented here tonight. We could prolong the inevitable if we want to, but don't forget, before they do anything, they have to take care of their violations because even if we approve this tonight, our resolution doesn't come through until September. So they have now until September to get it right, or that resolution doesn't get passed. Am I correct, gentlemen?
Yes.
So this gives them almost a deadline to say, hey, wait a minute, do we really want to move forward? We got to get this right. And if they don't get it right, that resolution will get passed. If we put all the conditions, lay them out, I mean, we know everything that they're going to do. We hammered this out quite a bit. I'm exhausted.
And the only thing that we have said, whether it's our professionals, somebody needs to make sure the property is cleaned up as they've spoken about. The north side of this property has a number of 55, rusting 55-gallon drums in that parking lot area. There's debris, there's dead cars, there's multiple things.
Mr. Gormaldi, I think you make a good point, but then we will put that as part of this condition. But I don't want to come back here and then rehear this whole application. If we're going to talk about that, if we talk about it right now, dump it into the condition side of this, and I'm sure Mr. Hale will advise his clients, you want this thing done, this is what you need to do. Am I correct?
Problem with that is condition, I walked the site, and all those things are happy.
Can we add that in, that all this debris, drum?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Site's got to be cleaned up. Mr. O'Brien?
The board could certainly ask the zoning official, the health department, to go there as soon as possible, make sure that this property needs to go.
Okay, Mr.?
And all the environmental drugs, I mean, Kettleworth, I mean, that should be part, he said the health language. Mr. O'Brien said health, I guess that will check that too.
Yeah, I think that comes under, I think that comes under part of what they also inherited. So they inherited this, they have to do a cleanup, whatever means and methods for the sake of safety, environmental protection, all of those conditions have to be met and have to be dealt with properly. Our subcode official needs to get out there, take a look at the property. You gentlemen are telling me here, saying you want to get this application passed, and you want to do the right thing for Kettleworth, clean up the place, get it done right, or the resolution is not going to go forward. And we'll put that in outline now. Kevin, are you satisfied with the plans coming to you and Chris for your final review? I don't really think the board needs to see the plan again, Mr. Gormaldi?
But...
You can, but what he's, what I think you're talking about is coming back again to look at these when we have two professionals that could just run right through the items.
Justice, yes.
Okay.
Here, Chairman. The June 17th version of the plan was sent out to somebody, I don't know who electronically, I don't know why they're not intervened, that it's a failure on the part of the borough.
Yeah.
But anything that's sent to us, perhaps that the board wants, we can review it just to verify that what is instead is there.
Yes.
And if everything is fine, the nation will send it to the entire board, so you can see it before the resolution.
That's fine. We'll have it before the resolution. I'm sorry, Mayor?
Is that going to be on the north side of the property?
You know what, Mayor, we'll work with the professionals, that's where it's...
Okay.
Probably should be on the south side.
It can be anywhere.
Okay, let's get a motion here. Is there a motion on the floor to approve this application with the conditions set forth, which he will recite? Mr. Gormaldi made the motion to approve this application with these conditions. Before we second the motion, you want to hear the conditions?
I was going to say, just make sure in those conditions that the building department and all their members have gone through the building, because there's construction going on, and that's all kind of health and fire, that they're satisfied by the time we get that resolution.
Okay, okay, okay.
The rest, the conditions that I had from the March meeting are as follows. First of all, the overriding conditions of the reports that are, and the conditions in those reports that Christian and Kevin put together from our first meeting, I have the trash dumpster area in the corner on the south side, that's where the trash is going to go, and there's supposed to be trash and clothes or plants provided to us.
And then provided.
Buffered, okay.
So that's not a condition any longer, that's part of the plan, am I correct?
Yes, and we've addressed that.
We've addressed that, so that's not a condition.
Colorized rendering on the south side of the building, I think we saw that tonight. No leasing of parking spaces to third parties, we haven't discussed that.
We've all addressed it to March 13th.
Okay, but I just want, okay, directionals at the entrance, I know in your reports, guys, you had some more details, like no right turn.
Yes.
Okay, so that's in there. Landscaping, again, this was before all the modifications, we will provide landscaping plans. I've heard testimony on that.
They have.
Okay. Question mark, remove bar, remove bar wire?
They agreed to that. And these were addressed on March 13th.
Okay, shields on the lights?
They've addressed.
Good. Light investigation. Signage plan, is there a signage plan for the site?
They've agreed to remove the unnecessary signage.
Good. Consolidating mailboxes?
No.
Small.
We talked about that on the 13th. They got a big mailbox, it's there, they just don't use it. That's why I don't know.
Tonight, fire and health violations has to be taken care of prior to CO.
Building off of...
That means zoning, fire, health, go through the building and make certain everything is tightened up. Site cleaned up, encouraged, no truck signage at the mayor and council on 14th, on 12th.
12th Street.
Yep.
No truck sign on 12th.
Okay. South side of the building will look like the rendering that we saw, like it's going to be colors, make it look like that. One EV spot on this property somewhere, and I think someone's talking about matching plans, what was that? I think who might say it, Steve?
That was a half of plans. They planned that out, natural plans.
The plan report, the plan report, the 17th, TRC, well, that is there.
Okay. That's, and then our normal conditions as far as bank taxes, getting any other approvals that they need, I don't know, presenting environmental...
Was the EV part of a condition or part of the plan?
A condition.
Part of a condition, right?
EV on some of the, yeah, that's it, that's what I have.
In regards to the subcode, I think you stated we'll go through the inside of the bill, but they should also go to the outside of the building because the 55-gallon drums and stuff are on the exterior, as I understood it.
Yeah, yeah. Specifically...
Right, that should be a condition, that the exterior and the interior should be reviewed by our subcodes.
Yeah, I agree.
His question was... Yeah, when you write your resolutions, and I don't, I agree, I don't know if this time, when you write your resolutions, do you include the caveat in there that, you know, conditional upon other state...
Oh, yeah.
So the hazardous waste would be like...
Whatever they need from any other entity, they have to get, and if it changes, we approve, they need to come back.
Yeah.
Let's not take this too far. We don't know if there's hazardous waste out there.
Right.
The thing is, we got to address what the violations are as one item. Violations have to be taken care of, and what the board is going to require, and you could put this part of the condition, is that we want a letter from the subcode officials that all these violations have been taken care of prior to us going to resolution. As far as a condition to clean up the site, clean up the site. What you find there, that's your responsibility to take care of in the proper manner, and that's how we do this.
How are we going to document how the site being cleaned up?
The letters from, yeah, the letters from the subcode officials, it's got to be cleaned up, it's got to be cleaned up.
Work and also direct your professionals to go out before the next meeting and resolution to give a report to the board on the conditions on the property.
So what happens, Mayor, if they meet the criteria that we talked about, which I think they will, and get these violations done, now they go to work and they're going to do their construction. If their construction does not meet the conditions that we set forth, they don't get a CO. So that's how, that's, that's the holding vault, right? That's how we hold that. But the building department has to exercise everything that we have here and get it done that way. Right? Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Gormaldi, seconded by Mr. Mazzio. Roll call, please.
What is this roll call?
To approve with this, with the conditions.
Little bit of slight planning, dimensional variances of which they're working on the one side.
Okay.
And I think when you...
Hold on, we were in the middle of a...
Second for Mr. Regal. Will you get a report from our professionals prior to your final resolution?
Well, yeah, because they have to get the plans off to them to...
But also that it's been cleaned, then they'll have all the letters from...
We should have that before September. I mean, we've got to have it, otherwise, wait a minute.
Well, that's the thing, I don't want everything to be waiting till September, then it puts these guys with no time to fix anything.
Yeah, so wait a minute, the things that they have to abide by...
They should do now.
Is starting now because they are in violation of the ordinances, right? That's what they have to take care of.
Don't wait till the resolution.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, no, they get, no.
Is there any way to put some verbiage to that?
We did, it's got to be done prior to the resolution.
We're telling them now. But if I do it in the resolution, it's going to be post facto.
Yeah, and let's say this, they don't get it to us, that post this October, then they're not going to see it.
Guys, do whatever.
Just get it done.
We get together with the town, with the teleboard...
I'll be down that block next Friday.
I'll be there six blocks.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Gormaldi. Yes, sir.
We're in the middle of a roll call, no?
I know, we got to just...
The answer that concern, our meeting in September, if I have a date, Kath, whatever that is, your work, our reports are due a week out, their submissions are due two weeks out, so two weeks out, we'll be out of the site looking around. So everyone knows, Kath, you got a date?
For Tuesday, Kevin.
September 23rd.
September 23rd, back to the four weeks, we're talking Labor Day or so, if it's not done by then, we got problems.
So, get going right away. Roll call, please.
And remember, Kathy, on the roll call, that this board has...
Nine votes.
Nine votes, we have an alternate one, Mr. Colwell, alternate three, Mr. Gormaldi, and alternate four is Mr. Reblaze. And they vote in that order.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Pizarna?
Yes.
Mayor Karlovich?
Yes.
Mr. Skiris?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Kmenti?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
And Mr. Laddaby?
Yes.
And Mr. Colwell?
Yes.
It's nine.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you, appreciate you staying like...
Thanks, anything for you, Mr. Hale.
In nine minutes, however.
Okay, we're still in session, guys. Okay, comments for the board, anyone have comments for the board? Gentlemen, we are still in session, I know you need to talk, but let's keep it down, we can't hear ourselves think.
And... Make a motion to, oh, no, there were no comments for the board?
No comments?
All right.
Nobody wants to tell us how good we are? Go ahead.
Make a motion, hold on, a meeting to the public.
Made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Clemente, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public.
Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mayor Karlovich, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourned by Mr. David, seconded by Mayor Karlovich, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I want to have this off. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's do a nice job over there, okay?
Do great.
Yes, start right away.